All right, good afternoon. Mr. Brennan.
President.
Mr. Rickman.
Here.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Didn't hear you, can't hear you, Howard.
Here.
Mr. Vine?
Here.
Present.
Present.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Benjamin.
Present. All right, um, Madam, um, uh, Red McDowell, you might give us a word, brother?
Sure do, we will. Let us pray. Oh, Lord, for this day and for all that you've given to us. You shrouded us with grace and possibilities. We simply ask that you might be with us as we deliberate this afternoon. Touch each one of us with fingers of love, mercy, justice, and peace. Allow us to sense within this place as we virtually gather the omnipresent Spirit that might surround each of us and yet this city of ours. We move forward towards a peaceful resolve to issues that has surfaced. And we simply ask that you might continue to touch us, allowing us to speak truth to power. We ask it in your name, amen.
Amen.
Right, um, thank you, thank you, um, Councilman. Um, is motion to adopt the agenda.
I'm on it.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion on move the previous question? For all?
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Rickman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye, thank you. Um, Madam City Manager?
Yes, sir. At this time, we would ask for council to approve the minutes of April 2nd, 2020, April 7th, 2020, and April 9th, 2020.
So move.
The second?
Second.
All right, uh, discussion, we'll move the previous question, for call roll.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
I think I, I think I saw, saw his face, uh, his lips move and say aye, uh, so we'll take it as a aye.
Check and volume.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Our city council discussion and action items begin with the COVID-19 update. Honorable Mayor Stephen K. Benjamin, uh, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you want to, or maybe Mr. Duval take up, um, or at least raise the discussion regarding masks and wearing those.
Uh, not yet. Um, just briefly, I mean, we all know where we are. Uh, we are, we are amazingly, um, uh, challenging, uh, territory. There's an old adage, uh, cursed, uh, may you live an interesting time. Uh, I do believe that we are, um, uh, indeed doing that right now as we deal with the national trauma, uh, that, that, um, we're all dealing with. And I'm happy to have some of our, our young, dynamic activists join us on the phone, on the call a little bit later on, uh, uh, around, uh, following the death of, of, uh, of Mr. Floyd. Uh, we, we still have to remind people that we're still living in the middle of, of, of the greatest pandemic we've seen in, in 100 years, uh, in the state alone. We, we have nearly, haven't seen today's number yet, so we have, uh, 20,000 diagnosed cases. As of yesterday, 19,378 over 60 dead, um, according to DHEC, uh, that, um, numbers more, that 86% of the people who may be infected in the state don't know it. So they suggest those numbers might be closer to 140,000, uh, individuals, uh, are at the tail end of, of, of a record week. Nearly 4,400 cases in the last, uh, week, uh, uh, alone. And, um, uh, it has prompted obviously a significant amount of discussion, um, amongst our citizens or around the issue of wearing masks. Uh, that, um, I, I know, um, each of you have received, whichever communicates, I have as, as well. Um, uh, Mr. Uh, Duval, and Mr. Vine, and others prompting, uh, we've been able to, uh, come up with a draft ordinance. Uh, the staff has looked at, um, our legal staff has looked at, uh, county ordinances and municipal ordinances from around the country. Um, primarily those in the Southeast, I might add, um, uh, trying to see if there was some way in which we could, uh, significantly increase, uh, the use of, of, of masks and, and help and slow the spread of the contagion. Uh, there's a draft document that, that we're going to have some ability to discuss as a council. We will not be acting on that today, um, because we want to make sure we push it out hard for the community to give us feedback. For those of you who are watching, uh, though our friends in the media, uh, we will try to have some clarity between now and the end of this meeting. They're the very best collect, uh, community input, so that we can digest it and, and understand, uh, where the, where the public is on the issue as well. Uh, but this council has not been reticent in, uh, in doing the things that are responsible to allow us to follow our true north, which is the preservation of human life. Uh, and slowing the spread of this contagion, uh, we don't mind being upfront, that's what we do. Uh, and, um, we'll have an opportunity to talk a little bit, uh, more about it. Um, as a matter of fact, we might, we might, we might do it right now. Um, briefly, uh, and let folks know, um, uh, that again, the, the document will be available, uh, today in its draft format. Uh, and we want to, I'll make sure, um, Ms. Wilson, um, on the, um, on the city web, uh, we can, we can direct people exactly as how they are, they able to have their say. Um, um, Howard, uh, you are, uh, to make it, does someone want to speak, uh, to the, uh, uh, to the ordinance that is drafted, or was that enough right now?
Uh, I'd be glad, it's, it's a very short ordinance, I'd be glad to explain it.
Please.
Okay, uh, this is a proposed ordinance 2020-059, and it's a compilation of, it's a shorter version of several ordinances that we've looked at around the Southeast. Uh, it, it covers wearing the mask in public buildings. And there's only two paragraphs that deal with, uh, the, where you have to wear a mask and then where you don't have to wear a mask. So I will briefly go through those. You have to wear a mask for persons over age, and opening open to the public, waiting to enter a building open to the public, interacting with other people in outdoor spaces included, but not limited to curbside pickup, delivery, and service calls. When engaging in business activities in private spaces, utilizing public or private transportation, and walking in public where maintaining a distance of six feet between other members of public at all times is not possible. And then there are five reasons why you don't have to wear a mask. Uh, face coverings are not required in the following circumstances: in personal vehicles, when a person is alone in enclosed spaces during outdoor physical activities, provided that the active person maintains a minimum of six feet from other people at all times. When a person is alone or only with other household members while drinking or eating, when wearing a face covering causes or aggravates a health condition. So that's the whole gist of it, it's just two short paragraphs. Uh, and I, I would think that it would be a good, good way for the city council to reinforce the governor's desire that people, um, should start wearing masks, as the governor has said at his press conference, there's a lot of stupid going around. And this would be one way for us to help the stupid, uh, get off the streets and for their faces.
Uh, I know that, I know that, uh, Tamika and Will don't allow those words to be used in their house, Mr. Duval, uh, uh, with their, with their, with their children. Um, and I, and I, and I, I want to, I want us to, unless someone feel the need to, I, I don't, I don't want to get into the merits of it. You know, this, this, we, we, we've all just seen that Bath Copy will have a chance to, uh, get legal advice from our, our legal counsel the very first time on, on, on this a little later on. But, but we did want to make sure the public knows that it is, it is in the ether, uh, that, that we're discussing it, uh, and that we need their critical feedback. Once we publish whatever document, uh, that, that we at least have some consensus around, around, around the, uh, language, not even the majority support, but I think a preponderance of the, of the membership council, uh, to, to do so. I know there's very strong, um, opinions on, on, on council, yea, nay, uh, those, uh, obviously rally around individual responsibility around public health. Um, and, um, so, uh, we're not long enough to know that, that two people can say the same thing and see it very differently. So we have, we have to respect the diversity of opinion. Um, at the very same time, um, uh, we're, we're dealing with a crisis unlike, uh, in, we've seen in the last 100 years. So we want to make sure, uh, that we act in earnest. If in fact, uh, we take this ordinance, uh, we would expect to do it as a special call meeting, not waiting several weeks until our next meeting as well. So, uh, let's, um, uh, Teresa, uh, as we're moving to meet, you and Eric and others determine how very best, obviously, people will choose how they're going to, uh, voice their own opinion. We have so many different platforms right now, but, uh, those that really want to make sure the voices are heard, I want to direct them towards maybe, um, uh, not, not, not to Tiffany, that was a, air. I want to direct them somewhere where we, where we, we can actually, uh, gather all those opinions and, and have a chance to give them, um, the attention that they deserve in this important issue. So let's, uh, but, but wanted to bring it up at the beginning of the meeting, I think that, thank you, um, Howard, that was important advice. Um, so, um, the vast majority of people, uh, tuning in would, would know that this is under consideration, and we'll, we'll touch on it again later on, all right?
The web, the website should have the ma, the draft mask ordinance, um, uh, on there, it should be on.
Perfect.
And then we'll give some clarification as to the public input through the portal or otherwise. And I'll just, um, you know, wait for you all to let me know when that special call meeting will be scheduled.
Yeah, yes, um, thank you very much, uh, Teresa.
Yes, sir.
All right, I'm, I'm done.
Did you have any other COVID-19 related matters, um, Mayor Benjamin? I know, uh, you all are very excited about the pledge program drive through.
Sorry, we got, we got, got a lot going on. Um, I haven't checked since this morning. We have at least, what, 215 different businesses across, across the, uh, I think they've signed up for the Brazilian Columbia Pledge. Um, I think that's indicative of the desire out there to, um, step up and be good corporate citizens. Um, for you to, as you know, monitor the health of their employees, uh, clean high-touch areas frequently, uh, encourage use of face coverings, and promote regular hand washing, limit the number of people both inside and outside, uh, of their, of their buildings if applicable, and also to promote social distancing, uh, at all times, including the public runway adjacent to our, uh, uh, their businesses. I, I don't have the ability to go to the website right now, but as of this morning, it was 215, I believe it may be more than that right now. Our, our team has done a fantastic job in getting the word out and it's so excited about the robust, uh, support we've seen from our businesses. Uh, also, want to, uh, uh, give a tip of the hat to, um, the folks at DHEC, um, Prisma, uh, to, to Kate Hampton, and so many of, of other, uh, from outside supporters like, like Nepron and Seafood and, um, uh, and, um, and Charlemagne the God and, and, and others on the work that they've been doing on going together, we will be a success, I believe a significant and successful testing at a college, uh, at Charlie Johnson Football Stadium, uh, this, this weekend. Um, Friday and Saturday, uh, we expect to have significant drive-through testing. That's, that's, that is the really, the, the perfect connection of the multi-sectoral approach you have to take, uh, taking this thing on. It has, it's good public support, uh, private support, and going for optic support, which community leaders at, at the front, that's where you get things done. And, um, really thankful for, for DHEC and, um, uh, and, and Prisma. And, um, uh, can't say enough about, about, uh, Kate Hampton and the rest of the team, just helping coordinate overall Columbia community testing strategy, helping as many people tested as we possibly, um, can. So, uh, really excited about that. So yeah, excited about Columbia, um, uh, our response to the pledge, as well as, um, uh, testing initiatives coming up. And just want to encourage people, let's all just keep doing our part, you know, let's take this one temple given us, let's protect ourselves and, 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 um, and if, if that's not enough to you, let's, let's, let's be our brothers and sisters keeper, protect the people we love around us. Um, so that's our, that's our responsibility.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to give one of the stuff that you've said it all, is the staff has been phenomenal and are just really excited. I think they've taken it on as a mission to do this work, um, because it means so much to our community as a whole. And I don't know if Missy or Ryan or Melissa or Kay can give some instructions for people who may not have signed up, but just real quick tomorrow, if you want to participate still in the pledge challenge and pick up, um, any, um, materials. And I think they're going to be giving out masks and maybe some other, um, donated items. So can one of you quickly, um, assist?
Ms. Wilson, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Hey, Missy.
Hey, yes, I can certainly do that, too. The event tomorrow, um, is being held for all of the businesses that have already taken the pledge. So if you're a business that have taken the pledge, um, you should have gotten an email invite to come to the parking lot between City Hall and the County Courthouse tomorrow between the hours of nine to 12. And we will have a packet of, um, information, support documents, as well as TPE supplies and disinfectant to hand out. For businesses who have not yet taken the pledge but intend to, we will schedule a follow-up event for those. But, um, for tomorrow, it's all of the businesses which are, I believe we have 216 that have already taken the pledge as of yesterday at 5 o'clock. So we welcome all of those businesses to come to our event tomorrow. For those that do not come, we will follow up and make sure that they also receive a packet of information.
Excellent. Thank you, Missy. Thanks to all of you, you all, um, all the hard work. Um, and then, Mr. Mayor and Council, I did want Henry, um, Assistant City Manager Henry Simons to just give a brief update on parks, facilities, um, with the kind of uptick in the numbers that we've seen over the last few weeks. We just wanted to revisit our phased-in approach to reopening parks, facilities. We have stayed on course with that schedule, and, um, I think Henry, those may just have some soft, um, changes that are just related to the hours of operation.
Okay, thank you, um, Ms. Wilson, for those, uh, opening comments. Thank you, Mayor Benjamin, uh, City Council for providing us with an opportunity to discuss with our, with our reopening plan for Parks and Recreation. Of course, we are approaching Phase Four, uh, which is inclusive of the opening of our recreational facilities, uh, gyms, our wellness center, as well as the Clyburn Golf Center. Uh, however, uh, as the mayor has already alluded, there is a concern, uh, with the increased amount of confirmed cases in the last several, several days. Uh, in particular, this weekend, uh, we saw over 2,000 new cases confirmed, uh, according to DHEC, which is, of course, alarming. Um, however, our, our goal is to, to monitor the data, uh, for the remainder of the week and proceed with caution. Uh, we're looking to stay the course with opening, uh, of Phase Four. Um, with a modified, uh, schedule for some facilities to help mitigate the, um, exposure, uh, for our staff and, and citizens. And of course, Phase Four begins on this Monday, uh, which is the, which is the 22nd. Uh, we will send an email, uh, out to, to you all directly reflecting those modified hours. We will also work with public relations, um, on sharing this to the, to the public. Uh, we are pleased to say that, um, Phase One through Three, uh, have worked very well thus far. We've got a lot of positive feedback regarding that, and, uh, we're, we're excited about, excited about that. But at the same time, we want to continue to proceed, uh, with caution due to, to the elevate, elevation in cases. So with those comments, I'll, I'll yield it back to Ms. Wilson for discussion.
Henry, just real briefly, the hours that you will, that will be, the facilities that will be impacted, still opening them starting Monday, but just briefly, um, describe which facilities you're, you're referring to.
Well, we're, we're referring to the, um, our community centers, which will be open from, uh, Monday through, through Saturday from 10 a.m. to 6 p.m., which is a modified schedule. Our neighborhood parks will be, um, Monday through Friday from 10 a.m. to 6 p.m. Um, the Clement Tennis Center, there's no change, uh, to the operational hours. We'll continue those hours from 8 a.m. to 9 p.m. Um, so those hours will remain the same. Uh, the, the Clyburn Golf Center, uh, no operational changes there. Those will remain the same Monday through Saturday from 10 a.m. to 6 p.m. Uh, there are some slight changes to the Charles D. Drew Wellness Center, Monday through Saturday, 8 a.m. to 7 p.m. Um, Sunday, 2 p.m. to 6 p.m. We're still focusing on not opening up our pools, uh, until further notice due to, uh, the increase, uh, in cases. But those are the, those, those are the actual, actual changes.
Thank you, Henry, and we will publicize that widely, as Henry stated, um, Mr. Mayor and Council. Did you have any questions or suggestions about that?
No, thank you, thank you for your vigilance on, on, on the issue, Henry, um, Teresa, yeah, great work.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, at this time, we will move into, um, you know, a very important discussion, um, particularly as our country, um, continues to deal with, um, um, a much-needed, um, look at policing efforts and racial injustice across this country. So we wanted to give Chief Holbrook the opportunity, um, in light of, you know, many things that have happened over the last few weeks, to reflect really on 21st century policing. Um, we are very proud of our chief and our entire team and the work that, um, he's, continues to do, um, being named to a national, um, task force to continue looking forward on policing reforms. I think he had his first meeting yesterday, um, and so we look forward to hearing more about that and the fact that he will be on the forefront of change. So with that, I'll turn it over to our police chief, Mr. William Skip Holbrook. Following, um, the chief's comments, Mr. Mayor and Council, um, he will be referencing, um, a lot of tools in their toolbox that they have been utilizing through, um, the cities already established use of force policy, but also some soft changes that, um...
That, uh, that, um, screen share came up like perfectly on time, so I know, uh, that Skip's not doing his own tech work right now. Um, I'm not sure who's doing it.
To segue into the budget session, as far as, um, the Police Department specifically is involved and take up, um, you know, just some, some overview of our proposed budget. And I know we have, um, some individuals on the line who would love to also hear from in that regard.
Okay, super. Thank you.
Yeah, good afternoon, uh, Ms. Wilson, Mayor and Council. Thank you all for giving me a few minutes to talk about this, um, very important topic. Um, I, I wanted to start by just, again, reflecting on the, uh, 21st century policing that's, that's underway here at the Police Department. Um, and I'll start by simply reminding everybody that, um, our mission is very simple. It's to provide professional and ethical service and protection of our citizens while we prevent crime and reduce the fear of crime through very important problem-solving partnerships. You know, professional and ethical policing, it's, it's how we police in Columbia, it's our standard. But, well, I think what we know now, and we have had conversations this last week, it's just not how well we do something, but it's just probably more important than ever that we show and demonstrate how we do things and, uh, how well we do them. We've got to message things better. But I want to put things in a little bit of perspective for you as we have this conversation. There's 18,000 police departments across the United States, um, 1.1 million police officers who make 10 million arrests a year. Um, here in Columbia, we, um, we answered 178,000 calls for service last year. That's all, that would be citizen contacts that we, we come into contact with. Uh, made over 6,500 arrests. We had 83 people hit by gunfire, and, uh, tragically, 25 of those were fatally shot. And we seized, um, over 880 guns last year. Had over 1,000 reported violent crimes, 913 burglaries, over 2,000 vehicle break-ins, and over 800 vehicles stolen. And I, I, I say that again to bring some perspective here. You know, we, if we talk about, um, reductions in funding, or, or even the, you know, the word defunding that's been running around a lot, you know, I, I think you have to look at that in the context that it's, it's spoken. You know, we would absolutely agree that there, and we encourage there to be alternatives to law enforcement doing what we would consider low-level offenses or all of society's ills, if you will. Homelessness, the opioid epidemic, mental illness, noise complaints, music complaints, loud mufflers, uh, drunkenness, house parties, neighbor disputes over, um, hanging limbs and shrubs and trash in the yard, public nu, nuisance violations. Um, we would love for those to be off our table so we could deal with, um, the point one serious crimes. You know, since Friday, we have responded to over 25 shootings, had over 100 rounds fired in our city, and we seized seven guns. That's where we need to be focused in our intention. Um, I, I couldn't agree more. 80% of our, our budget is personnel, that's the people that we have on the streets to police and address these very significant problems that I just emphasized. 20% of our budget is an operating budget. It's how, it's programs and, um, and costs that we have in place to, to deliver those programs. And I think what Ms. Wilson will maybe speak to in a little bit is, um, even breaking that down even further into over $8 million to spend on community policing efforts, and, and which is really the foundation on which we operate here in Columbia. Um, community policing is at our core and it always will be. So the task force on 21st century policing, uh, began in 2014. President Obama issued an executive order and has established a task force, um, to, um, review and study policing. In May of 2015, the task force submitted its final report to the president, and in that contained 59 recommendations, and they organized it around six topic areas that they refer to as pillars. Um, pillar one is trust and legitimacy. Uh, pillar two is policy and oversight. Uh, pillar three, technology and social media. Uh, pillar four, community policing and crime reduction. Pillar five, officer training and education, and pillar six, being officer wellness and safety. So, um, I'll come back to discuss specifically policy, um, and our use of force policy. But I would respectfully ask you all to indulge me for a moment, um, so I can just discuss a little bit further with what it means when we talk about 21st century policing and how we have moved from recommendation to action in Columbia over the last several years, where we're at today, and where I think we'll be tomorrow. Um, and I'll tell you that it takes courage and willingness to, to reform, and we have demonstrated that time and time again. And, and, uh, we will not let you down in this, um, situation we're in now either. Um, let me start by reviewing some pillars, and when I say review them, I, I just want to briefly walk through, um, the pillars and out of these recommendations, things that we, a, again, were doing and are doing. And then when we get into the, um, use of force policy, um, again, I want to emphasize to you what we're already doing. But, uh, this is, I, I think this is worthy of sharing. Uh, again, the, the task force recommendations, that, that final document was, um, the most important document that has been produced in my law enforcement career. I hope we can add to that with, um, this conference of mayors reform document that we're working on. And I know the major cities chiefs, um, are approaching this, uh, in a very similar fashion, and, and I'm more than confident that, uh, reform will continue, and what is now the highest, you know, most well-trained, professional, um, you know, level of law enforcement we've ever seen can even be better. The first pillar, um, building trust and legitimacy, uh, one of the recommendations was that, um, law enforcement should embrace a culture of a guardian mindset to build public trust and legitimacy. And, um, we, we recognize that, um, uh, the majority of our role is a guardian role, and that, uh, there is a warrior role, and that's, um, really a small part of what we do, but that guardian mindset is, is something that we, we embrace. And, uh, a, a great example of that is how we have, um, dealt with the five colleges and universities we have and dealing with the student population and, um, how we educate and warn and u, utilize, um, diversion and arrest our patients if at all possible and not be an occupying force. In 2010, um, a, the school operation netted 137 arrests. In 2015, by comparison, we had nine arrests. Uh, that's, maybe that's the difference in being a guardian versus a warrior, um, and having that guardian... That's, maybe that's the difference in being a guardian versus a warrior and having that guardian mindset. Another recommendation is law enforcement agencies should acknowledge the role of policing in the past. Acknowledge the injustices and discriminations and some of the missteps. And, you know, we certainly do that. We have learned from our mistakes and how we police in terms of zero tolerance, meaning zero tolerance, stop and frisk, broken windows policing, we recognize the disparities that some of those, you know, best of intentions, the results of those best of intentions and outcomes were not where we needed, needed to be, and we've made course corrections. So, we, we have acknowledged that. Recommendation, law enforcement agencies should establish a culture of transparency and accountability in order to build public trust. Well, in two thousand and seventeen, we became nationally accredited, and the, the most important reason for that was for policy development, review, and oversight. We have an annual IA report we produce for the public. We have a body worn camera program, first agency in the state to fully commit to that. We have a citizen advisory council, in-car cameras. We record all our audios and videos, interviews, and we participate in a public data initiative. Again, those are all things that help build public trust. Another recommendation, law enforcement agencies should make all departments' policies available for public review. We, we provide our policies online for public review. When serious incidents occur, agencies should communicate with citizens and media openly and mutually. Again, we put all of our information in our annual report, our critical incidents, and we always issue news releases in a timely manner to address both successes and missteps. Law enforcement agencies should promote legitimacy internally within the organization by applying principles of procedural justice. And that begins with our clear articulation of organizational core values. And we do that through our organizational policies and protocols. We have a vision and a mission and core values, and we incorporate that in everything that we do. We create a culture of excellence, and it's easy to have policies, but creating a culture is difficult. Agencies, agency leadership should examine opportunities to incorporate procedural justice and internal discipline processes. We have a chief's roundtable where we hear from our officers, and we have, most importantly, a discipline review board that is comprised of officers' chain of command, a peer, a chosen peer by the officer, a citizen from our citizen advisory council, and our police attorneys. Law enforcement agencies should institute residency incentive programs. We have a residency home loan program. We have yearly bonuses to encourage living in, in our city, and we have a take-home vehicle incentive for living in, in our city. Law enforcement agencies should consider potential damage to public trust when implementing crime-fighting strategies. As I mentioned before, we recognize some of the sins of the past and, and the occupation policing. Zero tolerance has not proven to be effective. We focus on deterrence strategies now. Ceasefire is a great example of that, where we call folks in that are, we know are susceptible to reoffending or being victims of violent crime, and we provide them with opportunities and, and escape routes to leave that life behind them and be productive citizens. We're very strategic and data-driven in what we do, meaning we focus on our prolific offenders. We know that a very small percent of our population commits a large percent of our crimes. Therefore, we, we focus on that population to not affect those that aren't involved in crime. Agencies should create a workforce that contains a broad range of diversity, including race, gender, and language. Again, we have a very aggressive recruitment campaign, and you all know the investments that we make in, in our recruiting, and we, we recognize that that's probably our greatest efficiency right now. And we're hoping through our Explorer program and our Cadet program and, and the investments that you've made in, in our, our vehicles and equipment and, and officer salaries are all going to impact that for the positive in the future. Pillar two is policy and oversight. As I mentioned, national accreditation really leads the, the way for us in, in terms of policy and oversight. We, we again put our, our reports online. We, law enforcement agencies should use training of use of force and emphasize de-escalation and alternatives to arrests such as summons and arrest citations. We train in what is referred to as T3. That's TACT, Tactics and Trust. ICAT training, integrated communication assessment and tactics, those are all de-escalation tactics. We purchased a firearm simulator in June of two thousand and seventeen, and we do shoot, don't shoot, decision-making training with all of our use of force and firearms training. We teach unconscious bias ethics training and mental illness recognition along with addressing disabilities and those folks with disabilities and how we interact with them. Policies should mandate external and independent criminal investigations for use of force, officer-involved shootings, or in custody deaths. Our policy requires SLED to investigate any allegation, criminal allegation of an employee or discharge of a firearm and any fatal discharging of firearms. Law enforcement agencies are encouraged to implement non-punitive peer review of critical incidents. We review all critical incidents with staff in a non-punitive way. We do that constructively to learn from mistakes and change, make course corrections if necessary. Law enforcement agencies are encouraged to adopt identification procedures that implement scientifically-supported practices to eliminate or minimize presenter bias. We do not complete our suspect photo arrays. Those are done independently through SLED. The involved officer is not involved in that photo array selection, so we remove that bias and influence. Some form of civilian oversight of law enforcement is important in order to strengthen trust in the community. Every community should define the appropriate form or structure of that oversight. We have a citizen advisory council that was established in two thousand and fifteen. It's been instrumental in our, in our, this one process and critical incident review and, and policy review. Law enforcement agencies and municipalities should refrain from practices requiring officers to write quotas, predetermined tickets. Not only does that prohibit it in a policy, but state code that was enacted in two thousand and sixteen prohibits quotas. Law enforcement agencies should adopt or enforce policies prohibiting profiling and discrimination based on race, ethnicity, national origin, age, gender, identity, sexual orientation, immigration status, disability, housing status, occupation, and language. We have model policy prohibiting racial profiling. Pillar three, technology and, and social media. Agencies should develop best practices for technology-based community engagement. We hired a social media manager. We created a social media team amongst rank and file. We redid a website that is interactive and very informative. We have electronic reports that have proven to be incredibly important during this COVID experience. We use electronic surveys and survey cards. We obviously rely on technology through our surveillance cameras, our ShotSpotter, our body worn cameras, our computers in the car, our iPhones, and the technology we use with our violent crime investigations now with NOD and has been instrumental. So, how we leverage technology and communications is imperative for us delivering our message. Pillar four, community policing and crime reduction. Community policing is a, cannot just be a program, a unit, strategy, or tactic. It's got to be the core principle that lies at the foundation of a police department's culture, and I, and I feel very strongly about that with the Police Department. Agencies should consider adopting preferences for seeking least harm resolutions such as diversion programs or warnings. We have a homeless court that is award-winning. We have a PTI program in municipal court that is, is widely used. Our ceasefire program that I previously mentioned, again, addresses some of our most vulnerable population for reoffending or being victimized. And of course, we utilize arrest citations and warning citations as is the norm. Custodial arrests are last, last option. And again, as I mentioned, the, our new Crime Gun Intelligence Unit focuses on prolific offenders to five percent instead of occupation-based zero tolerance strategies. Law enforcement agencies should work with community residents to identify problems and collaborate on implementing solutions. There's probably few cities that have the organizational structure that we have through our Columbia Council of Neighborhoods and over one hundred neighborhood associations with the strong leadership that we see in the various neighborhoods that we have throughout our city. All unique, in my opinion, very unique, and that's what makes it special here. Law enforcement agencies should schedule regular forums and meetings where community members can interact with police and help influence programs. We have public command staff meetings, neighborhood meetings every week, front porch roll calls, just to name a few. Agencies should engage youth and communities in joint training with law enforcement. Again, our Explorer program, our Cadet program, our summer internships, our summer jobs program through the Urban League and our ride-alongs, all opportunities for us to engage with our youth. Agencies should establish formal communication, citizen advisory committees. Again, our CAC stood up in two thousand and fifteen. And communities should adopt policies and programs that address the needs of the children and the youth. Our risk program is, is something that's initiated through the parents with, of concerned youth at risk. We focus on their decision-making and consequences. It's very successful. And, and probably one of the most impactful programs that we've initiated in the last couple of years is our Handle With Care program, where anytime a child is present during a, during a law enforcement action, we note that in the report and we notify their school the very next school day so they can handle that child with care and it not become a, a discipline issue. They make sure that child gets the extra attention that it might need or some resources that they may need. Law enforcement agencies should work with schools to encourage the use of alternative strategies and involve youth in decision-making such as restorative justice and youth courts and peer intervention. We participate in youth arbitration, and that's a diversion for status offenses at schools, and it's very, very effective. Law enforcement agencies should establish a memorandum of agreement with, with schools to limit police involvement with student discipline. Our memorandum of agreement with original one specifically states that law enforcement will not get involved in school disciplinary matters. And communities and law enforcement agencies restore and, and build public trust between youth and police by creating programs and projects for positive interaction. Our Justice Ambassador Program, our summer internship, as I mentioned, our jobs program, our Explorer Program. And for our youngsters, when it's a hundred degrees in July, they love seeing the ice cream truck roll into the neighborhood. Pillar five is training and education. Again, we spend an enormous amount of time on community policing and problem-solving, interpersonal communication skills, bias awareness, crisis intervention, procedural justice, mental health, de-escalation through ICAT and T3. Agencies should engage community members in training. We do that through our Citizens Police Academy. We've done four times a year, and we have a Citizens Police Academy Association. Law enforcement agencies should provide leadership training to all its personnel. We have introduced the FBI Law Enforcement Executive Development Program to all of our supervisory staff. That has been a process over the last several years. Several years, we have committed significant monies and resources to that training. Executive staff attends FBI National Academy, Police Executive Research Forum, Senior Management for Police, Southern Police Institute Executive Leaders Program. Some of our up-and-coming women leaders in our department have completed the International Chiefs Association of Women's Leadership Institute. A number of our mid-level managers have completed the FBI Command College, and we look for opportunities all the time to develop, to develop our up-and-coming leaders or, as I often say, develop our bench. Crisis intervention training should be a base recruit training and in-service training. We are one of a handful of agencies in this country that have completed the One Mind Campaign. We have model policy that develops, that was developed to determine how we respond to people in mental crisis. Twenty percent of our agency is certified in crisis intervention. A hundred percent of our agency has gone through mental illness recognition and first aid training. And the last pillar, wellness and safety. Every law enforcement officer should be provided with tactical first aid kits and training. We provide all our officers with tourniquets, stop-the-bleed training, tactical first aid kits, and Narcan or naloxone. The tourniquets have not only saved the life of police officers, but have saved the life of our citizens. We, as you can imagine, there is frequency in us arriving on scenes where we have people that are bleeding from serious and would-be fatal injuries that we immediately provide that stop-the-bleed training, apply tourniquets and save life. And unfortunately, we are in the midst of a growing opioid crisis, and we do not see that, that reducing anytime soon. We have had a number of lifesaving applications of the Narcan deployment when officers have arrived, arrived on scene well before medic, where minutes matter, and they are, have been trained and deployed Narcan and restore the breathing of those that have overdosed on, on opioids. And last, have policies in place to require seat belts. We have a mandatory seat belt policy, and that, unfortunately, we had to reemphasize that after a tragic, a tragic line of duty death. And we also have a mandatory ballistic vest, mandatory wear program. So, I know that was a lot, and I was talking fast, but the point, the point and the takeaway I hope you have is those are all recommendations that a handful of agencies in two thousand and fifteen were doing. Now, we grabbed it, we ran with it, we had the courage to implement reform. That is a blueprint for what policing is supposed to look at, and, and you can see that is a living, breathing document here in Columbia, alive and well. We are an example of 21st century policing. I'm going to take you back quickly to really the, I think, the, the main issue that we're talking about today, and that's use of force. So, I want to direct your attention to our use of force policy, and that would be, that would also fall under pillar two. So, there's two objectives I, I want to, I want to complete in, in this review as we discuss this use of force policy. One is I want to point out to you the number of areas or topics that have been included in many that you have seen discussed in many of the demand documents or the Eight Can't Wait campaign that have been part of our policy for a number of years. And as a result of our continuous policy review that we undergo through COIA, and in order to stay progressive, we always are looking for ways, you know, to achieve the highest industry standards through model policy review. Those are going to be highlighted as we go through this in blue. So, what you see in blue has, has included already in our policy. And then, the second objective would be introduce you to proposed new language that you'll see highlighted in yellow. And now, that'll cover areas that prohibits chokeholds and carotid artery holds that have also been referred to as vascular neck restraint. And then, there's a section that also addresses precautions to preventing positional asphyxiation. So, if you'll look at the, at the top of the, at the top of the policy one, a, a couple of things that, that I highlighted that are, I think, very important. And, and one, first and foremost, being that we respect and recognize the value and sanctity of each human life, and we emphasize the importance of treating all persons with dignity and respect. The second highlighted area, to not read at all, to read what's most important is it is a policy of this city that officers will only use the minimum amount of force necessary to accomplish a lawful objective. I, I think that's very important, and that's, that is part of one of the Eight Can't Wait areas, and I'll address that in a minute. Use of force carries the responsibility to render aid. Officers have the duty to intervene. Officers have the duty to intervene. Again, these have been in our policy and incidents of use of force require documentation and a report to be done. That's been in our policy. The next section is just terms for the purposes of our discussion. A carotid artery or vascular neck restraint is described as any technique which applied to in an effort to control or disable a person by applying pressure or force to the carotid artery with a jugular vein on the sides of the neck with the intent and purpose of controlling a person's movement by constricting blood flow to and from the brain. Chokehold is defined as a physical maneuver that restricts an individual's ability to breathe. Again, carotid artery deals with blood flow, chokehold deals with airflow. And duty to intervene is just again described as an officer's duty to intervene to prevent another officer who is about to use excessive force or unnecessary force or engage in other misconduct. What we have proposed to you highlighted in yellow, five point one, and I'll also point out that that has never, it's never been allowed or been trained, and that is chokeholds. This this entry at five point one prohibits the use of a carotid artery hold and chokehold unless deadly force is authorized. Five point two, this has frequently come up. This has been in our policy, highlighted in blue. Firearms will not be discharged from a moving vehicle or at a moving vehicle. And again, this addresses shooting at moving vehicles. And the proposed change in prohibiting the chokehold, I would suggest that's, that is three of the eight. Eight for eight and the shooting at moving vehicles is four of the eight. Next page, which has been included since two thousand seventeen is police officers will not use less than lethal weapons to force compliance from a person who is passively resisting. ECDs are essentially a taser. They may, they may be used to restrain a violent individual when alternative restraint tactics fail or are reasonably likely to fail or where it would be unsafe for officers to approach a subject to apply restraints. And and just anecdotally, passive resistance is really based on the totality of the circumstances. It's very subjective, but I would offer an explanation of it could be illustrated if you think of it as a low level of non-compliant resistance. That non-compliance is passive and officers offers no physical or mechanical injury, meaning it's just somebody that's just essentially ignoring your lawful order, ignoring your command to do something or just being argumentative, just standing there. It may require you to put, put your hands on them to direct them, to move them, put your hands behind their back. But just that simple passive resistance, you're not prohibited to use a taser. And then lastly, section nine point zero, positional asphyxiation precautions. In order to avoid asphyxiation, officers shall, whenever possible, avoid tactics that would impede a subject's ability to breathe, resolve in chest or throat compression or airway blockage. Position the individual in a manner to allow free breathing once the subject has been controlled and placed under custodial restraint using handcuffs or or other authorized methods. And and what that simply means is, once the handcuffs are on and the resistance is controlled, you got to make the person comfortable, stand them up, make sure that they're not in medical distress and they're breathing and functioning on their own. And of course, the the last part of that deals with transportation, meaning that you've got to make sure somebody's restrained appropriately and placed in a comfortable position for transport. And then the last illustration, just for explanation, is our force continuum. That has been, that's been part of our, our training and our use of force application since I've been here. And to, to direct you to that specifically, there are six points in that force continuum that starts with the officer's presence and finishes at the highest level with deadly force. And just for, you know, illustrative comparisons, if you just use the Eight Can't Wait Campaign Zero request, the ban chokeholds and strangleholds, that is what's proposed to you today. That would be one that if approved, that we would have that. Duty to intervene is already in our policy. Ban shooting vehicles is already in our policy. Establish the use of force continuum is already in our policy. Require all force to be reported is already in our policy. Exhaust alternatives before shooting, already in our policy, being officers will use minimum force necessary to accomplish lawful objectives. And then I would, I would argue that require de-escalation and require warning before shooting is all within our force continuum. And our, our policy numbers that requires minimum use of force to accomplish lawful objectives, those are specifically tied into those two areas. So I, I think you all would agree that we have a culture of accountability, checks and balances, model policy, progressive policy, the courage to reform, address deficiencies, recognize those, make course corrections and be what you and all of our citizens would expect of a twenty-first century professional police agency. And I'll answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. That was a lot and comprehensive and necessary. So thank you very much. Questions, Ms. Devine?
Not a question, just, I mean, listening to the chief, I think it's very good for us to be reminded of the things that CPD does as well. I think in light of a lot of the recent conversation, it's, it's easy to get focused on, you know, one part but looking at kind of the breadth of things they do. And I just wanted to offer or remind council and those that don't know, even over the last couple of years, I, I just, two things that stood out when I was, when I was listening to Skip. Chief Kelly and a couple of other officers participated in taking a group of students to see the hate you give. And afterwards, had a really, really great conversation with the kids just about law enforcement, law enforcement's role. And so when you talk about building trust and having those hard conversations, that was one incident. And then just last year, did a similar event and came with us to see Just Mercy and had a conversation with kids and parents about the criminal justice system. This was volunteer time of the officers, really, really engaging and just, you know, I think that we get, we don't remember and don't think about some of the things that they do to build that trust on ongoing basis and have these, these conversations that we're having now. It's not, they're not just participating in these conversations now, but continually try and find an opportunity to, to have that meaningful dialogue with our citizens, especially our youth about these hard topics. So those were just two things that that stood out to me. I wanted to remind everybody that, that whenever there's an opportunity for them to be in those kind of situations, they do that. And so Skip, I want to thank you and thank your officers because those are really important when you talk about the development of our young people, especially with these hard topics.
Thank you, Ms. Devine.
Mr. Rickman.
Yeah, I just, Steve, I thank you and the rest of the police department because you've always been above everyone, always be better, you've never quit working harder. And I just want all of y'all to know that supporting you tremendously and your actions today and continued throughout the past, present and the future have been for the best interest of the city and all of its citizens and you've always done that. And, you know, these times that we're in, we're hearing a lot of discussion and, and, you know, I'm proud to say that the city is, has, has been very progressive in its role and that law enforcement has and gone beyond its duties. And I just, I want y'all to know that because I know y'all heard a lot of folks demanding things and, and the chants and the the defund police. Well, that's not what this community is about. Y'all have shown that this community is about everybody and I just wanted to make sure that I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDowell and Mr. Davis.
Hard issues are very well hard issues. Hard issues can very well be hard issues. I want to thank chief and perhaps all of the members of CPD for their due diligence in making things happen in our city. There are some who might disagree with that, but I think disharily. We are responsible for maintaining the heart of this city. And I want to thank you for your words and the policies that are already there to reinforce those things. I know we live in difficult times and these are difficult situations. But I think when we take our city at heart, I think we are moving in the right direction. It's not defunding that's the issue. The issue is the issues we've been talking about and that's transformation and of course, and visible policies that will instill within each one of our citizens the issue of trust. Thank you, Chief, and please give the officers our thankfulness for their due diligence.
Thank you, Mr. McDowell.
Mr. Davis. You're on mute, Sam.
I'm going to go back to my, my other life several years ago. I think Howard can relate to this. I remember here in Columbia with the agency I worked with, we, there was a concern about people with disabilities, special needs and their interactions with law enforcement. And one of the things I did was we went to this Columbia Police Department to go through the familiarity and educational process of, of body language and those kinds of things that people who are not regularly integrated to the normal daily rhythm might possess. And that was our way of working with them and helping them to understand the kinds of things to look for and, and be aware of the fact that people were coming from institutions back into the community. And I, I see that you're still doing that. And that is one of those things that, that help to diffuse situations in, in communities and neighborhoods. And I think one of the things that I'm always proud of, I've had the opportunity to explain that this to some people recently this week, and that is you go to every neighborhood meetings in this city, this capital city, and law enforcement partners are there and they, there is interaction that some people don't have the opportunity to see. Exchange of information, dealing with complaints and feedback coming.
You're on mute again, Sam.
I use my hands a lot, but, but I think, again, the, the, the presentation is, is very proactive. It, it covers a lot of things that, that we're doing that are not being done in other parts of the country. And that's a tribute, I think, to the, to the officers that, that we interact with ourselves. And, and the, I think the overall perception of CPD, of, of the citizens of Columbia. So I'm, I'm, I'm always proud to interact with the officers and, and watch them as they engage the citizens in neighborhoods as well as in the general public. So my hat's off to our guys for being proactive and, and really being ahead of the game in a number of issues that are, that are being addressed in other places.
Thank you. Thank you. Chief, you said a mouthful. I know it's a combination of a number of different reports. I know some of the existing reports and also just an update on a number of things that have been happening. Oh, we probably need that reduced to a document. I think that the, the public needs to know in one sitting, all the different things that the CPD in particular has been, has been doing for several years. Very much enjoyed working hand in hand with the Obama administration on the Twenty-First Century Policing Initiative, President of African-American mayors, and I was even more proud that I had you and the last meeting that we had at the White House when President Obama addressed the, addressed three hundred or so mayors. There were only three agencies in the country, if you remember this, that he mentioned as leaders in the initiative and we were one of those three. I think we may have been the only police department, the others managed sheriff's departments in other parts of the country. So we've been leading in this space. So with that comprehensive report that you just did, I still believe that the most important thing you say is that, is that we're still evolving, that, that the world is changing around us. We, we've got to spoke to some of these incredibly young leaders, some of them are monitoring the call, so maybe we will be participating before we take up the budget discussion. That, that I will tell you this, not just my colleagues, we've had a chance to speak to all of you, but to everyone within the sound of my voice, we, we are living in a historic. I mean, we, we, we are, we are, we are standing on shifting sands. The world is changing around us as we know it and for the better and, and for the better. I think it's important to, to note that. Our goal is, is to figure out how we can turn the, as you've all heard me say, turn the, the pain and the passion into real progress. How do we move forward together at a time when every institution is, is completely reimagining this, the status quo and the way that we do the things that we do, even the things that we do well? How do we stretch and, and think even bigger, recognize the fact that, that even simple changes in, in our laws that we have to pass or policies, any department, any agency won't change the world. And I mean, in the wake of, of, of the, the end of Ameri, of human chattel slavery in this country, passed sweeping laws, the thirteenth, fourteenth, fifteenth amendment. And literally, within a decade, with the election of eighteen seventy-six, America began to slide back into, into chaos, literally legalized chaos. So we can't just focus on the laws that we're changing, whether it's addressing policing in America or police violence. We have to really work to decide that we're going to take a broad swipe at destroying the systems of racism in our, in our, in our country and our culture. This is not just the police. This is our role as, as public leaders. This is the role of individual citizens stepping up and serving, deciding that we're going to do, we need to do this role for the faith community. There's a role for the business community, philanthropic and nonprofit community. So we've got to think big about what we do. We can't take eyes off this ball that we're, that we're talking about how we reform the system of justice. But, but the larger issue, we've got to continue to lead from the front as we have done in these colored health issues and on policing. And we've got to continue to reimagine Columbia. I talked to some of you about, about the, yeah, and the name, but, but, but really a commission on Columbia's future. You know, what do we want to be in, in twenty thirty? What do we want to be in, in, in twenty forty? We go through that process every several years. Teresa's been diligent in taking us through our visioning process and master plan process. And regrettably, usually when we do, there's very little citizen participation regardless of how, why'd you cast the net? If there are citizens who are there, they're, they're citizens, the most dedicated and involved citizens. We run our neighborhood associations, our business associations will show up and, and, and participate in some way. So right now, we're in a moment in history where the wind's blowing hard. And we've got to throw up our sail and And we've got to throw up our sail and catch as many, as many of these leaders, particularly young leaders, who represent a much more diverse and energetic digital, a whole group of digital natives who, who I believe can add some, some real flavor and diversity in building the city that we're talking about building. You take some of that, that young energy and knowledge base. You combine it with some of the gray hairs and the no hairs here and throughout the community. And you come up with a really good collection of ideas that for the very first time, I do believe, fully encompassed of the voices of all the people in this community. There are people right now who are finally getting the opportunity to tell their stories. Not to be told what, what we're doing as, as we do for a living every single day. Not to be told about, about the advances that we're making. And I'm very proud of the things that the city's done. But sometimes just to remember that Mama would tell me, God, God gave you one mouth and two ears. So you listen twice as much as you talk. Just listening and having people tell their stories right now is, is, is an incredible moment that if in fact, we don't capitalize on this right now, we're going to miss something. I do believe that, that we're watching history unfold. And I hope and pray that all of us understand our role in this process. That, that I saw a few signs and if anyone, I apologize. They said that my, my, my mother marched so I wouldn't have to march. And my grandparents marched so I wouldn't have to march. I, I do not believe that. I do not subscribe to that idea. I marched. My, my, my parents marched. The reality is that, is that we are linked in the long chain in, in this country, fighting against racism, sexism, and antisemitism, and homophobia, and xenophobia. But we're linked in a chain as constant architects of building a more perfect union. We have to fight every generation to make sure that we continue to make the world a better place, that we continue to aspire and think big about what we're trying to do in this country, starting in our corner of the world. We can't affect everything that happens around the world. Reality is that now we are independent and interconnected. If something happens in Bangladesh or in Kuala Lumpur or in Minneapolis or Atlanta, we are connected in the world in which we live. And we'll have to deal with that here in Columbia. And we understand that, that responsibility as humans, as members of humanity. But very yet still, our job is to make sure in our little corner of the world right here, that we're doing everything we can and that we're listening, listening to the, the, these prevailing winds and that we're adjusting accordingly. We'll get some moments as we move together to take big strides together as a community. And sometimes we'll take incremental steps, moving again in the, in the right direction. But it's so important that we do it together. If we can't turn this into a real, meaningful and edifying moment that makes this community better, then, then I believe that we will have missed the opportunity of a lifetime. So let's keep our ears open. Let's keep our eyes open. Let's make sure that we open the doors, at least to this city hall. I can't speak for legislature, we advocate up there. I can't speak for Congress. We got, we got Goodman like Jim Coburn and others up there fighting the fight. But as it relates to us in this city, let's try and do our very best to make sure that we keep moving on that journey towards, again, being the constant architects of building this. So we can do it. I'm encouraged. I'm excited. Chief, I thank you for your leadership, you and the command staff. Great work. I, there's at least one preacher and one preacher's kid on, on, on the line and a couple of other leaders in the church. We don't expect police officers to be perfect. We do understand that, that with the very unique responsibility a police officer has, indeed empowered by, by the law to take life, that we do expect our officers to be held to a very high, high standard and held beyond reproach. And we believe that accountability has to be at the core of making sure to ensure and keep the public trust. We'll never waver from that. And I know that Chief Holbrook will not as well. At the very same time, we cannot expect our officers to be perfect. And my faith tradition, and we may all say at the same faith tradition, there's one perfect person that's ever walked the face there. He is not, he's in the room, but he's not in this room right here. Certainly on this Zoom call with us as we speak. So we can't expect perfection, but we can demand accountability and we must demand accountability. At the very same time, we can't expect our officers to be robots. They, they are affected. They're flesh and blood, men and women who suffer from the same demands on their lives that, that, that we do. And they're the ones who run towards danger when we're all running in the opposite direction. We've got to continue to, to invest in them, make them very best at what they do, allow them to do their jobs and not be the first responders. As the chief said, we opened this call to issues that are not issues that are public safety. We've got to step up as a community. We've got to make those investments as a city, but we also have to step up as a community making that happen. So thank you, Chief. Thanks to council. And then we got a whole lot more work to do, but I didn't want to make those comments. That was a lot longer than I expected to go. So appreciate your indulgence.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mayor City Manager.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. At this time, well, I would suggest you all take up Resolution Number R 2006-8, which would adopt the City of Columbia Use of Force Policy with the changes that Chief Holbrook recommended to you. He went through in great detail what they've already had in there and what was included. But those highlighted sections reflect what he believes to be some more explicit language. And I think he may have an additional clarifying. I think maybe Mr. Vine, I'm not sure if you had a question about a section that you want to ask that and the chief can answer that for you. And then you all could take that item up. And then I just have some additional budgetary items to bring your attention that complement his, his presentation.
My question just was, I think, as you stated, Skip, there are things that we've not done, but these recommendations are just making it plain and clarifying it. Towards the end, and I don't know if you still have it in front of you, the last slide, when you talked about the progression of force, you, you indicated that the A Can't Wait had one, was asking for something and you said it's implied in there. And I'm just wondering, since we're making things more explicit, even though it's something that's implied and something that we do. I think it was the, you said there was the, the warning for the shoot, about the shoot or something. There were two things you said that were in there. And I'm just asking why not just put that in it and make it not implied, but implicit in, in the policy changes?
Yes, ma'am. So the required de-escalation, de-escalation is within the policy under 8.0, under less than lethal. And it says, "Police officers assess a situation to determine what technique or weapon was most effective to de-escalate the incident while using the minimum amount of force necessary to do so." That addresses the required, you know, de-escalation. In my opinion, the requirement, the warm before shooting is implied in the force continuum. That's, that's not a, an absolute. You know, the, the force continuum is, is just at it. It's a continuum, but it also doesn't mean that you exhaust each level before you get to, you know, to the highest level being deadly force. Sometimes that's, that's an immediate, you know, split second decision. And you don't have the opportunity to go through the entire continuum. You know, presence and instructions are, are what's taught and is important. But I don't know how we would. That would be something that we'd probably have to discuss further with, you know, with staff and legal of how we would address that in writing. I understand what you're saying, but I don't have a clear cut answer for you on that as we speak today. But, but to clarify, your de-escalation is specifically addressed in policy?
Okay. Yeah, if we can maybe get TK and then just look at it. I think it doesn't hurt to be specifically written out. Because I, I know that that's what you train, but being able to put it in the policy, then we can point to the fact that we actually have it in our written policy.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. All right. Ms. Wilson.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, would you like, I'd like to take up.
Is there a motion on the policy?
So move.
The second. Second, second it? I think McDowell did, but he's on mute, so I'll do it. Second, second by Mr. Davis and McDowell. Question for Carl.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Aye.
Mr. McAllem?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
You're on mute, Sam.
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor and council. As I referenced, I do think that while we are taking up the budget on its second reading today, items 11 and 12, it's an appropriate time right now just for me to make a few comments about the budget, particularly as it pertains to the police department. I did receive the I Can't Breathe South Carolina document. Not originally, but it was passed on to me in the last year or two. And I, I feel that it's incumbent upon me to give some clarifying language regarding how the budget process works. I do think that these activists and influencers have been very thoughtful in their approach to look at our budget and make some recommendations and want to offer suggestions. And I hope that going forward, I can be more of a part of that because I think an education process is appropriate as well. Maybe had I received it a little bit sooner, we maybe could have delved into it even deeper. But we've tried this staff and I in the last day or so since we got it. Because I do think it's so important to be able to address and dialogue on into the future. Unfortunately, time isn't on our side today. In South Carolina, cities are required to adopt a balanced budget by the end of their fiscal year, which is June 30th for the City of Columbia. And so obviously, our budget is on council's agenda today for a second reading. And I do take that, as you all know, very seriously. It's really my fiduciary responsibility to provide you a balanced budget in a timely manner and get it passed according to state law by June 30th. So with that said, while I would recommend you proceed with the budget as we proposed it for this upcoming fiscal year, I do want to acknowledge that we did receive the suggestions from the I Can't Breathe South Carolina group. And with time, I think there are many things in there that we could continue to dialogue and work together on. As I said, that our budget for this year is already significantly different, as this council knows, from other budget years. The COVID-19 pandemic has placed a tremendous impact on the development of the budget. There are uncertainty in our revenue projections, no stability there as we were developing this budget, which is unlike previous years. And we have tried to arrive at a budget that still maintains our service delivery for the citizens of Columbia. It's my responsibility to develop that budget for you, for your approval, hopefully. And it's based on providing city services and address city council priorities. As Mayor Benjamin mentioned previously, you all do a phenomenal job with your Envision Columbia planning, always dedicated to that. And that, of course, tries to address lots of competing interests in our city. It's interesting that we're having a conversation a lot about policing and refunding or reallocating. But in this city, there's always been an emphasis by this council on public safety and the right type of public safety. And many of our citizens argue for more police officers, not less, every year. So as a manager, those competing interests, making sure that we're not reacting to just one specific group or need is the, is the responsibility that I carry. I will say that city council directs a lot of time and expertise, even when you can't direct funding in very tight budget years like we're having now, to direct this professional staff to work on critical topics and issues like the Food Policy Committee and Affordable Housing Task Force. So even in those years when funding doesn't allow for the recommendations to be implemented, the work is still being done. And city council stands in the gap with funding many years, every year, that you're able to through the community promotions, funding various groups in our community, nonprofits, even when our general fund is limited and the tax base based off the city, this capital city in which we sit in, is very limited. So there are no room for adjustments that I can recommend currently with this budget. But I do think with continued dialogue and conversation that many of the issues that I think are just very well intentioned in the I Can't Breathe South Carolina document that I saw are right in line with things that this council believes in and is already doing. I think we just have to continue the work and work together. So I just wanted to say that, to offer to those individuals who I know will talk shortly, that, you know, as, as the city manager, it is my responsibility to do the work on the budget with our staff. And we open ourselves up to you as well. I know you've probably been more familiar with the elected officials, but we did take a deep dive as best we could into the document presented. And while we can't address the changes right now, we wanted to show you, I have just one or two slides in particularly related to policing because I think that's where they focus. Missy will show you that we elevated in community, in the community develop, community policing arena of CPD's budget. The fact that 20.5% of their budget in the general fund is already focused on community policing investments. If you were to look at this list, these costs are primarily reflected in personnel associated with the programs and objectives of Community Based in 21st Century Policing. And the chief has already very well outlined those pillars and how they are implementing those respective programs. But the next slide or two will show you that by line items, which we're happy to share, there are over $11 million worth of community policing investments being made in the City of Columbia Police Department's budget to inclusive grant funds. You know, everything from graffiti removal and abatement to the block watch programs. I won't name them all. Coffee with a cop. Chief Holbrook mentioned front porch roll calls, as well as our wonderful ice cream truck, proactive enforcement through neighborhood improvement sweeps, and so on and so forth on our, on our next page as well with the, the personnel dollars that are spent on these programs. So I think she said it best at the beginning. And I think we're all really saying the same thing. That a lot of these efforts that police are spending time on maybe could be better served by other social groups or, or other programmatic things and agencies. But until we know that those things are happening, they're trying to do hard work of combating crime, but also many times serving in roles like these. So would love to continue the conversation, particularly as this national landscape and discussion continues. I think we would all agree it is not fair to categorize all communities as the same. And I think all of you have spoken very eloquently about what makes Columbia special and what makes it different. And these are some of the things that we're not saying we're perfect at. But certainly, there's a lot of facts here just by following the data and the dollars. Is it just that we are making valiant efforts? But we'd just love to continue the conversation at the appropriate time, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely. Thank you, Teresa. And we're going to have, I think we're going to take the consent agenda first.
Or if you'd like to just go right into items 11 and 12, it's up to you, Mr. Mayor.
Some folks have been, been waiting. Do we have any debate on the consent agenda? If not, let's just kind of knock that out real quick. Okay?
I think, I don't know that there's a question.
I have a question.
Yeah. Okay, I think the consent agenda is.
Okay, I think the consent agenda is good, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Is there a motion of approval?
Move approval.
Any discussion, any discussion with the previous question for Carl Row? Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Aye.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye. Thank you. Let's go ahead. Those young folks also have jobs. So I want to make sure that they've been monitoring, probably got a little more city government than they wanted to get today. But hopefully, we find that edifying as well. One note, the original document I sent all of you, I received earlier, was from I Can't Breathe. The name of the new organization is Empower SC. Empower SC, so the young people on the phone right now, they're going to present us on their recommendations as how we might look at the future changes to the budget. We obviously have a statutory requirement that city managers talk about. We've been through the public hearing process and first reading, and we need to move forward with this budget. But we obviously exercise the latitude under our ordinances of state law to amend the budget forward. And once, I'd love to, Teresa, immediately, after this, go ahead and get you all in some meetings with these young folks. I'm going to let them walk through their own budget, but obviously, it's reflective of some of the investments that we made previously, that obviously now is valuable investments. And as a thoughtful community, they want to see more of it. It's against the backdrop of, obviously, a significant budget that all across the country, state and local governments are going to see have $1 trillion, if I remember correctly. Our budgets were 32, 33, made house smaller than one here, including pre-COVID-19 funding for $4 million, the Police Department budget as well. So we couldn't have a more perfect storm, and I don't mean that in a favorable way. So we've got some challenges before us. But I want to go ahead and have them speak, Erica, if we can tee that up. Madam Clark, let's go ahead and get their input on budget and then commit to, again, very follow-up in meetings with some of our staff, maybe some time with you and Missy and Beth and others, as to how we look forward, including, of course, the chief. So Madam Clark, are we teed up?
Yes, sir.
All right. So who do we have first? And I ask you, of course, everyone knows the public participation rules. Three minutes, state name for the record and your organization for the record. And we'll take everyone one at a time.
Good afternoon, councilmen and women of Columbia and Mayor Benjamin. Thank you for having us. My name is Rye Martinez, and I am here to talk to you about Empower SC's proposed city budget and what that looks like for our Columbia. We live in a beautiful city. She is filled with artists, thinkers, voices of laughter and love. When I close my eyes and think of our city, she's warm and filled with passion. But when I open my eyes to see a video of someone's lost son living on the streets or hear our neighbor's Nana, who couldn't afford food to buy her groceries this week, I think of our beautiful city in tears. My Columbia would be on in those streets, bringing her homeless citizens back inside to tuck them in bed. She would be standing in the checkout line, jumping in front of Mr. Jones, who miscounted when adding up his coin jar of grocery money to pay for his food. My Columbia, she's passionate, responsible, resourceful, which is why she knows exactly where her funds are needed the most and exactly where they aren't. The 2020, 2021 police budget is currently being considered at 32.5% of Columbia's total budget. That's $41.8 million being spent on protecting and serving. Is that really protecting our less fortunate from having to sleep in alleys? Is that really serving our senior citizens whose retirement ran out a long time ago and are unable to feed themselves? I don't think so. We don't need ice cream trucks and coffee from the police. We, we need change. But if we could reduce that 32.5% just a little to 30%, we could take $3.16 million and use those funds to make real change in our communities. My Columbia, she would use her resources to get her house in order and make sure all of her people have love and support as they leave. I now yield my time to my colleague and co-founder Jasmine McCray.
Good afternoon, councilmembers and Mayor Benjamin. Thank you for your time today. My name is Jasmine McCray. I'm a fellow co-founder of Empower SC. Let me tell you more about My Columbia. My Columbia cares for all of her children across all grade age groups, young and old. Empower SC is proposing refunding the Senior Resources Emergency Nutrition Program to $250,000, back from a budget of zero. My Columbia rescues all of her children regardless of the crisis. Empower SC is proposing refunding the Economic Stabilization Fund to $500,000, back from zero. My Columbia loves all of her children, including the nearly 800 who sleep on the street on any given night. Empower SC is proposing increasing the homeless service budget by $500,000 to better serve those people. My Columbia defends all her children, including those who cannot defend themselves. Empower SC is proposing raising the Public Defender's Office budget by $78,000 to make it equally funded to the solicitor's office and have an equal chance at justice. Our mother Columbia is in despair as her citizens continue to suffer in silence. It is time to hear her calls for equity and justice, and we hope you will answer. I now yield my time to my fellow colleague and co-founder, Mr. Demetra Hill.
Our Columbia can be a mother to the motherless. Councilwoman Devine, as a champion for food security and a leader in critical social infrastructures for youth, you know how feeding a community, both in body and in spirit, can uplift our people. Be the Columbia who feeds that hunger. Councilman Davis, as a board member of Big Brothers, Big Sisters, you have a unique understanding of the challenges that marginalized children face. Be the Columbia who our children need. Councilman McDowell, as a reverend and pastor in our local churches, you know that our first calling is to feed the hungry and clothe the poor. Be the Columbia who our most vulnerable need. Councilman Rickman and Councilman Brennan, as successful businessmen with entrepreneurial spirits, you know firsthand how the opportunity to build a business can create generational wealth for our children and prosperity in our communities. Be the Columbia who our minority business owners need. Councilman Duval, as a veteran yourself, you understand the unique challenges that our brave servicemen and women face when they leave the service. Be the Columbia who my grandfather needed when he came home from the war. Mayor Benjamin, as a leader for police accountability and community growth, you understand that justice for all doesn't just start with words, but with actions. Be the Columbia who our Black and Brown communities need. Your voices, your votes, and your actions can change the lives of so many. We've done the work to show you a path forward. Will you walk it with us? This is our Columbia. Is it yours? Thank you. I yield my time back to my colleague and co-founder Jasmine McCray.
In my closing statements, we were invited here in good faith that our voices and proposals would be heard so that we could work together to make a difference in how our city's funds are spent. Our time and words were based on this premise of trust. However, it seems, it appears that the city council and the city manager, along with Chief Holbrook, have already made a decision that does not include the input of the public. The budget is not due until the end of this month. There is still time to make these adjustments. The question is, are you really interested in hearing our voices? I yield my time.
All right. All right. Thank you, Mrs. Martina, Mrs. Martina, Ms. McCray, and Ms. Hill, Rye, Jasmine, and Demetra. And it's important, I know that city manager referenced it, and I know I had some previous conversations with Elisa. Two of you haven't had the pleasure of speaking directly with you yet, Jasmine. And I appreciate the work that y'all have done in this budget. And just a couple of quick notes. And we'll have a chance, as we sit down, city manager, and I think at least a few of us would want to be there as policymakers, as well as the council, to sit down and walk through the process. Yet, it does seem like it's easy to amend the budget. And usually, as in years past, as we've had significant years of surplus, even against the backdrop of a very typical DNA of a city as it relates to property taxes and the like, this year is literally different than any year that we've seen probably in the history of the city, maybe since the 1930s, with the cutbacks that we're seeing. But in spite of that, as you walk through the process of what we're required by law to do as a budget, there is actually a process in which you have a public hearing on the budget. We had that public hearing. We've had a first reading. So this is indeed the final reading of the budget. As I indicated earlier, the opportunity to amend that budget is something that we have also as we go forward. So I want to encourage you that your voices will be heard. I know that much of the verbiage that we use is that I demand X, Y, Z now. And it was important, as I mentioned earlier, to catch the urgency of the moment. I understand that. But there's a process that we have to go through to make these things happen. Even as we work through just some of the ideas that had been advanced in the Empower SC proposal, the, most of the ideas here are things that we've actually done. And indeed, we are the only city in the state that actually have done these things over the last year, many of them in response to the COVID-19 crisis. The Community Development Budget is actually much larger than $377,000. Just even the money we moved through Community Development Block Grants is $1 billion. And a significant amount more money is appropriated through it. Refunding the Senior Resources Emergency Nutrition Program, the $250,000 that we stepped out and paid and appropriated from surplus to fund that program just in March, just a few months ago, was the seed money that led to over 345,000 seniors being fed all across the region. That was what your city council decided to do, to try and seed philanthropic and other public and private support to make sure that as we went through this 100-year public health crisis, that seniors are fed. We've supported senior resources in a number of unique ways over the years, and we will continue to do so, as well as a number of other nonprofits. With about another half million, we appropriated there, and obviously, the Economic Stabilization Fund, also crafted by our staff at the request of council, has put $1.4 million into the hands of hundreds of small businesses just over the last couple of months. So again, we're the only city in the entire state and one of the few in the country that's done this. So again, it's important just to sit down and work through the entire arc of the discussions, what we've done just since March, to make sure that we step up and meet the Columbia that each of you just spoke of. The Public Defender's Budget has been, I believe, doubled on Ms. Devine's recommendation and advocacy over the last years, and we continue to try and seek equity and parity, not just with the solicitor's budget. We have statutory and legal obligations that we'll continue to meet there. And while we also demand of each of those two parts of our system of justice, certainly the service that the people in Columbia and Richland County deserve. As it relates to homeless services, I encourage you to take a look at the other programs that we fund, like housing first, the investment in youth housing that we've done, particularly those homeless individuals who might suffer some type of mental health challenges with Mercy, a partnership with Mercy, and the investments we've made there over the last several years. Our investment, the annual investment in inclement weather shelter, to make sure that the least among us also have what they need. I hope that a current review of the budget would also speak to the fact that, as we talk about affordable and healthy foods, that we were the very first city in the state to establish a food policy committee. What you're referencing, even in this document, are recommendations that we received just immediately before the beginning of the pandemic, for our food policy committee, one of the subcommittees in January. And we're actively working with them to continue advancing the issues of fresh and healthy foods available to people in all communities, especially marginalized communities. And again, for the grant program to nonprofits, I believe Teresa, was it half, $750,000? Half, it was $500,000 plus the $250,000 that we'd already appointed to Senior Resources, so three quarters of a million dollars. So it's important to note that, again, as we want more, as we seek to invest more, that even the recommendations, including in this document, are building upon things that we've already done, things that we've highlighted. So it makes me feel good that we are in synchronicity with what we want to collectively see in your Columbia. And I'd say this, as maybe the last comment, we also obviously see the importance of arts and culture and the investments we've made. I'm sure my colleagues can hear in your voices, there's a stream there. These are incredibly talented artists as well, as you might be able to hear. And as Mr. Davis is as well, artist and artisan, you can hear the power and the focus in art and discuss with these leaders, the importance of investing in the arts and culture and using this moment as well. And I know we've talked about this amongst ourselves, to try and make sure that we use this as an opportunity specifically to tell the story of the African seed and the American sun here in Columbia, to be able to tell the very rich story, the contributions of African-Americans in making the city what it is over the course of history to this moment, with the Black Lives Matter movement, with the work being done by those of Empower SC, that we tell that story and then be able also to project forward as we're, if in fact, we're able to do the things that I know we can do, through this Columbia, the Commission on Columbia's Future and all the work that we need to do collaborating in that large socially-distanced conference room with our staff. Let's ideate over some ways in which we can really make these moves forward. But I know, Ms. McCray, I think it was your comment, we're listening. We're listening closely. We've got to do this and do it together. So I don't want you to think that we're not listening. And I know that part of the, I think the importance of the movement right now is that we want changes and we want them now. But there is a process within which we all have to operate, and we can still work together to get those things done. So I want you to remain encouraged and stay involved and play a leading role in those changes. So I, I want you to remain encouraged and, and stay, and stay involved and, and play a leading role in those changes, which I believe actually can happen in very short order. Um, so, uh, but it's going to take, uh, real dialogue and, and, and working together. I want to thank the three of you, uh, for your participation today. Please, uh, uh, don't leave this meeting discouraged. Uh, hopefully, uh, it was, it was, it has been informative, and we can figure out where we go from here, when we're actually able to sit in a room together and not have 24 hours or 48 hours notice on, on, on changes that, that, uh, that you might want to see, um, while, on, on issues that we're actually already acting on as well. So, um, uh, that was a lot, a lot said. I think Ms. Devine, I'll say your hand, um, uh, and then Mr. Davis, and, um, then let's, um, let's move forward.
Yes, sir, and I, I will be brief. I, I just want to say, oh my gosh, I mean, it just warms my heart really to hear these amazing women. Um, I've, I've had an opportunity to speak with Demetrius and Ri as well, um, and Jasmine. I look forward to, to dialoguing with you. Um, but, you know, you guys have, have done a lot of work and put a lot of thought in this. So I do want y'all to know, I, I don't want y'all to feel discouraged because we, we are hearing you. And I think there are a lot of things that we can work together on. You guys have brought forth concrete thoughtful things where, as a lot of people just don't even know where to start. And so, um, I, that sounds like an old lady, but I'm so proud of you guys because I think this is just amazing. Um, but what I would like to offer is, the mayor mentioned, you know, to continue the dialogue, to, to bring people together. Ms. Wilson, you know, I think we certainly got to, um, in those meetings, add in, um, Melissa and Gloria as well because as I hear the things that they want us to invest in and, and look at, um, I do think a cursory view of our general fund buzz, budget doesn't adequately, uh, reflect the investment we're making in some of these really, really important public services that we do. Um, and so to get a deeper dive into, you know, what community development is doing financially, as well as just support for the needs in our community that they're doing, um, what, you know, Melissa's doing as far as small businesses. So looking at the police department budget, um, I know it sounds like, you know, and it's easy to say that's a large part of our budget, but it's a huge need for us. But there are so many other areas that we're working on, and then not just our budget, but, you know, our partners as well. And so I think, you know, if we can continue that dialogue, and, and certainly, I think where we want to get to is exactly in line with envisioned Columbia and what we've put out there. Um, so if we could continue to dialogue with these young ladies and, and, and other, I know there are other, um, ladies, um, who would like to ha, have that dialogue as well, we continue. But I, I just really wanted to say that publicly, please don't get discouraged, and I look forward to talking to you guys. And though, um, I think Jasmine, I got an email from you right before we got into the meeting, so I wasn't able to read that. But, um, you know, I'll, I'll be in touch this week, and we can continue to, to keep this going. Um, the last thing I just would, would want to say, um, Ms. Wilson, um, one of the things I know that part of their document is also about, you know, the things that aren't us, but the state and, and federal funding. Um, and so as you have this meeting, also maybe one and others that talk about what we also do to make sure that we're leveraging our relationships and our, our voice on the state and federal level as well to see some of the changes that they want to see. I think that, that needs to be, um, you know, laid out as well. But thank you, ladies, and I appreciate you guys being here.
Mr. Davis?
Um, I, I'm, I'm very impressed, uh, with you young ladies. You have a, you have a clear understanding of, of, uh, how you think we ought to be of service to you, number one. And, and, and two, um, it, it, it took a lot for you to take our document that we envisioned and, uh, put your stamp on it because it's obvious that you've done some work, some homework. And I would also say to you, uh, don't, don't get discouraged. We, we, and I also view you as our partners. I, um, I've been where you are now. Uh, I've marched up and down the streets of this city, marched against the flag, uh, marched against City Hall, marched for the right to be here. And I'm sitting here because of the efforts of people like you back in my day. And you have, and you're demonstrating to us that you have the talents, uh, you have a commitment, and you have a deep conceited concern and love for where you live. And so you're gonna, I think, play a major role moving forward in how we all sow the seeds to continue to make Columbia the best there is and a, a place that you would be proud to call your home. And, um, like my colleagues, we're all available to, to dialogue. If this is a continuous dialogue, and, and, uh, I'm looking forward to that also because there, there is a solution as a result of vision. And so we, I look forward to you continuing to share your vision with us and, um, and, and carving all of this into a partnership that, uh, will definitely move forward for the better.
All right. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mr. Davis. All right, um, on, on the, on the budget, um, I, um, I'm sorry, I don't have the agenda in front of me, Teresa.
Take that budget, Mr. Pierre. Ordinance's second reading, item 11, ordinance number 2020046, amending the 1998 Code of Ordinances of the City of Columbia, South Carolina, Chapter 23, Utilities and Engineering, Article 7, Stormwater Management, Section 23205, Stormwater Service Charge Rates.
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
That's, uh, no, no increase, uh, this year and, and rates?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
All right, um, with the previous question, clerk call roll.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Item 12, ordinance number 2020050, to raise revenue and adopt the budget for the City of Columbia, South Carolina for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021.
I move approval of the budget.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, is there a discussion? Um, yeah, I want to tell, to our young leaders who participated today, we'll, 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 we'll discuss budget, um, 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 well into the future. So I plan to be actively involved, and though, um, some of you have full-time jobs in addition to the leadership you're, you're, right? But we're going to lean on you, um, as, as we go forward. Um, uh, no discussion, and with the previous question, clerk call roll.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Ordinance's first reading, number 13, ordinance number 2020056, an ordinance to authorize the renewal and extension of the letter of credit securing the $81,860, $81,860,000 original principal amount of City of Columbia, South Carolina Water Works and Sewer System Revenue.
So move.
A second.
Second.
Move the previous question, clerk call roll.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Item 14, ordinance number 2020057, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement regarding the use of the Segura Park Capital Fund between the City of Columbia and Hartwell Capital LLC for the planned multi-use entertainment facility in the Bull Street Development.
I move approval.
Second. Question, Mr. Rickaman.
Yes, I got several questions. Um, reading over the agreement, the, the capital fund was set to replace of the needs in the future to eliminate our or the taxpayers' liability. Um, because all the funds that, that, that go into that fund are direct revenue, they're shared, and it's to taken care of. Um, basically, the way I see this, because I haven't seen, is that we're, we're basically going to allow them to drain this fund, our responsibility. Now, I shouldn't say drain that fund, that's not true. There's $969,000 in that account. They want up to $50,000 a month. For about two years, that's 600 grand, so there's roughly about 365 left. It's not supposed to get below 400. And anything that is not contributed, we're responsible for the maintenance and the fee, all this mater, all, everything. And if you look at the, at four of the contract, I mean, we're basically responsible for everything in that stadium. Um, and that concerns me that we're using this money to fund, uh, operations. I understand that, that, you know, times are different, baseball is suspended, so forth. But this really amounts to a massive bailout, um, for lack of a better term, um, for, for the, the, the baseball team. And it's, it's a large amount of money. And I think there needs to be some more detail and understanding agreement. My understanding, I've heard that they're going to pay this back, but I haven't seen a document that secures that. Doesn't talk about how that's going to be handled. We got a lot of businesses in this community that are suffering and don't have access to this capital. This capital is for everything from plumbing to whatever. And $50,000 a month, when there's nothing going on over there, is, I have really a struggle with these numbers. I think that we need to have a much deeper dive before we approve this.
All right, um, Missy, you want to speak to any of those, um, questions raised?
Mr. Rickaman, also, um, part of the questions that I also asked staff as they were working through this with Mr. Fire, um, is regards to the money that continues to come into the fund. I don't know if you all were provided with it, Missy, if council got the projection of the draws, um, and the funds that would still come into the account going forward. Um, once I saw that, that answered some of my same questions that I think you just raised. And it's my understanding that Mr. Fire would still be held accountable for, um, any of those, um, major maintenance issues or, you know, big-ticket items ultimately, um, if, if those were in need of repair or replacement. Missy, did council get that document?
They do not have that document. The, the ordinance itself estimates between 40 and 50,000 dollars per month. It, it's likely to lend itself more towards the 40,000, but those estimates are rough. Um, I can give you the breakdown of what, what the bulk of those dollars, those expenses would be. The, um, funding that will come in through the naming rights happens in March each year, and the city's portion of that funding will come back to the account. Um, there has been a floor established with, the fund cannot drop below $400,000 as a result of this agreement. And we can certainly provide clarity between first and second reading, but the fund was established from the very beginning so that the city would not be required to, um, pay for any maintenance in the future. So the intent of the fund, um, is that all of the, all of the maintenance required, um, and we're involved in planning for that, those capital replacements and the maintenance. But all of that would be incurred from this fund or from Hartwell directly, not from the city in excess of the fund. Um, and we can certainly add some clarity language to how the repayment will be made. The full acknowledgement is that if we get to year 10 and an item is needed and the fund is not sufficient, Hartwell is going to come out of pocket to make up the difference. So we can certainly add clarity language to that.
I'm, 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 I'm Mr. Davis, and then Mr. Rickaman again.
All right, my, uh, so we will have that to review before the next reading, correct?
The draft document, Mr. Davis, or, yeah, we can, we can provide you whatever you're asking for before next reading.
Right, I'm, I'm, I'm talking about the, the information, um, well, I guess, the, the document and the, the wording that, um,
correct, Chris?
Daniel is referring to also, and you're, you're saying that, um, the, the, the agreement is that the fund will be replenished.
And the accounting, Missy, I mean, I, that we need to provide to council now. We have projected accounting.
Right, we, we can certainly do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, uh, Mr. Rickaman again?
Uh, just going back, I think we still, we haven't seen what the $50,000 a month's going to cover and how that relates to the document. Is that a, uh, and is that in our, for theirs? Is the covering any G and A? Second thing, need to know that, I know you've seen the projection of the pain being done for the people's rights, but everybody's asked for delays and everything. Since there is no season, is that being reduced? Have we seen the document? So I think there's a lot of questions before we can just arbitrarily open the door and change the, the spirit of how the fund was set up. And it clearly says that in the document, both in section, or what was that, section four, especially when it comes to D and, and what, I described it completely. And I, I do think there's, there's liability, and I think we, we ought to have more information before we commit to that.
And I think, and I, I'd be happy to see that on the second reading too. I, I, I'm not as concerned about the, the, the funds for a reason. Um, obviously, we've done a lot of things on the funds because we're dealing with, um, uh, economic disruption, literally, unlike anything we've seen in 80-plus years. Uh, the unique situation that the Fireflies are, are in, uh, going virtually, we expect to be maybe, um, a few years, a year and a half, two years without having posting a, a, a game, as well as the hundreds of events they would have posted in the interim. Uh, and this is, um, no, no liability to the city, including the air, that's not happening there because of, and, and this, and I don't have concern, I think it's established for some of the things that you just articulated to us, uh, Missy. Uh, verbally, let's all have all those documents between now and, and, and second reading. And any, um, if, if possible, any additional questions that Rickman might have. Uh, but I'm, I'm fine with moving forward with, with, with this. It's been a fantastic partner. The Fireflies have been a great partner. We're going to have the muscle through this together, and these are extraordinary times. Um, so I, I don't mind, um, standing in the gaps, uh, with them, and I, and I respect that this, I mean, um, just in a different, in a different place. Um, um, I move the previous question. Clerk call roll.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
No, and I want to state for the record that we have not received budget for this or accounting for it or anything else. And the contract clearly states that the city will be liable for those funds if they're not returned in there.
Yep.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Um, the, um, again, all those questions are Daniel raised, and it is, and also the, uh, information that we don't have in hand that you shared verbally, uh, please, um, uh, share that with us in, in written format before next. Thank you.
Item 15, ordinance number 2020058, authorizing the city manager to execute amendment number six to amended and restated agreement of sale and purchase between the City of Columbia and Baker and Baker Real Estate Developers LLC for the sale of parcel A containing approximately 27,664 square feet and parcel B containing approximately 25,444 square feet located on the eastern side of Gift Street between Laurel Street and Blanding Street in Richland.
So move.
A second.
Second.
Question, seeing none, move the previous question, clerk call roll.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Moving into a period of resolutions, item sixteen, resolution number R two thousand twenty zero six three, release and abandonment of a twenty-square-foot portion of the city's existing fifteen-foot waterline Eastman along a portion in Richland County at twelve Cotton Place Lane Lot thirteen in Cotton Place.
All right. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
The second.
Second. Second.
I'm moving the previous question. Court call roll.
Mr. Vernon?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Hi.
Mr. Vine?
Hi.
Mr. Davis?
Hi.
Mayor Benjamin?
Hi.
Item seventeen, resolution number R two thousand twenty zero six four, amending resolution number R two thousand eighteen one zero seven, authorizing the operation of Soda City Market by expanding the market footprint to meet social distancing and safety protocols.
Motion.
So move.
The second.
Second.
I will say, I'm 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 very appreciative of them all and his team, working very collaborative with our with our our staff. Everyone's been in a very fluid, fluid situation. I think they've really been operating very much in the public interest. And I just want to say thank you to them. And hopefully, we can, we can get closer to some sense of normalcy. The closer and closer we get to to day one, so we'll see. Move the previous question. Court call roll.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Hi.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Hi.
Mr. Vine?
Hi.
Mr. Davis?
Hi.
Mayor Benjamin?
Hi.
Item eighteen, resolution number R two thousand twenty zero six six, authorizing the city manager to execute a facility encroachment agreement between the City of Columbia and CSX Transportation, Inc.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes, sir.
The encroachment geographically, is that down, where, help me to understand that.
I would have to get staff to assist with this one, Mr. Reverend McDowell. And this one actually came in from legal, I believe, but Teresa, do you all know exactly the location?
No. Patrick, are you on here?
I'm on here. I don't know the location, but I do know that what it is is basically a pipe, I think for wastewater or water that, but it's on our property, so that's what the encroachment is. I'm not sure where it's located because I don't have the document in front of me.
Patrick, can you repeat that?
Right, it's for a pipe. This is a pipe. It has to go on our property. So that's what the encroachment is for, it's your location.
Patrick, for the life of me, you're slurring your speech.
Let's blame it on a bad internet connection.
Down to Alpha Phi Alpha Cave somewhere. I went Alpha's high during the day. But yeah, it's a pipe that encroaches on our property. I'm not sure the exact location, but it's a pipe.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, this is Clint. I was going to just add a little bit of detail for clarification if I could. This is for each Rocky Branch Phase Two sewer project, very important project for surrounding the downtown area. So it's down toward the Olympia area and the crossing of a large wastewater pipe down there.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Clint. Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you, Clint.
All right, you good, Miss McDowell?
Yes, yes, sir.
Is there a motion?
So move. Second.
Move the previous question. Court call roll.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Hi.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Hi.
Mr. Vine?
Hi.
Mr. Davis?
Hi.
Mayor Benjamin?
Hi.
Thank you.
I believe you all have one appointment that was held from the last council meeting. Mayor Benjamin and counsel, the Richland Lexington Airport Commission.
All right.
I moved, I moved the reappointment of Carol Fowler. She has her one term.
Discussion. Move the previous question. Court roll. I'm sorry, I apologize. Mr. Rickaman?
Want to note for the record that we didn't talk about any of the other applicants. And that speaking to several of the legislators, they that they really wanted for us to look at putting a new pointee that would be much more constructive and looking into the way the airport's been operating.
Miss, there's a, there's a, there's a motion on the floor, but I think in the interest of full transparency, Ashley, and Ashley's on, Ashley, you had the applicants. Daniel, you tell the delegate, I I I also have some interest in their appointees to the commission too, but that's another story. Will we, uh, from Ms. Jenkins?
So there, while Miss Carol's position is open and she could be reappointed to it, it would be her second term if she was reappointed. But the other individuals that applied, actually applied when we advertised it. And we had at least one, two, three other individuals that applied for that position. And the next available opening on this particular committee would be the other committee position that opens February twenty twenty-two.
Ms. Walker, she's also eligible.
They're both, yeah, this is
Yeah, and he's also eligible.
Okay, so it's a note, so no new applicant since the last time we considered applicant?
No, we have not readvertised it since March, and and the applicants came from when we were about to advertise and put on the agenda for March. So no new additional applicants since then.
And no communication with those applicants since then?
No, we probably emailed them and we let them know.
But actually, when you say March, you meant a couple of months ago, March. So that's not abnormal that we normally would advertise, close it, and then those be the ones in the queue.
It's not abnormal, no, because this this appointment was actually originally slated for one of the meetings in March. And so the applicants had time, usually over a two-week period, to submit their applications. We respond to them and let them know we received it and that, you know, if there are any additional updates or changes, we let them know. So they were expecting, but then when everything got put on hold, obviously now, fast forward to now, we'll contact them and let them know whether they are appointed or not. And we keep their applications on file for an additional two years if anything opens, and we usually contact them if 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 there is an opening.
I am. All right. Thank you. I would want to encourage as much dialogue as possible with the delegates on all issues. It's certain they have some specific issues around any of our appointees on any of the commissions. I want to hear about it, but I support this follow-up appointment as well. Move the previous question. Court call roll.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
No.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Hi.
Mr. Vine?
Very much, yes.
Mr. Davis?
Hi.
Mayor Benjamin?
Hi.
If if I could also, let me add, certainly, I agree with the mayor. I mean, and if the delegation has concerns, I mean, they all called most of us for any and every other thing, so I certainly would hope that they would call us if they had a concern. But but what I would say is that Ms. Fowler, since she's been appointed, has been very responsive to my questions and concerns. And actually, Ashley was working with Ms. Fowler to get the new director on a council meeting. And because of our agenda and the way we we kept getting bumped, it was unable, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ashley, I think we were, we had finally gotten it scheduled for for March. And that's when we were, we stopped having meetings. But I I will say that, you know, probably next to Ms. Sinclair, Ms. Fowler has been the the most engaged, at least from from my standpoint, on our commissioners.
All right, thank you. All right, Teresa? All right, any county, county, city council committee reports or referrals? Ms. Vine?
I just want to briefly say the Affordable Housing Task Force had our first meeting last week. It it was, the meeting went very well. I did want to point out, and we, I can get with Erica to do it for our next meeting because it's just formality. I apologize, I inadvertently left off two members when we were appointing the members. Ivory Matthews from Columbia Housing Authority is on the task force, as well as Tanya Isaac, who is a citizen who lives in North Point Estates. And so they are both serving and both came to the first meeting. We had a full contingent at the first meeting, very productive. We set up committees to include public education, to make sure people understand what affordable and workforce housing is and what the numbers are, so that people understand the the needs. Also, talk about legal, a subcommittee on legal matters and a subcommittee on finding creative financing. So everybody's very engaged and energetic. We did have a couple suggestions from the committee members of other disciplines that they may want to add, and so I'm gathering those. See, Mr. Rickman has his hand up. I want to remind you guys, if you had somebody that you feel would be add a value to the committee, please let me know that, because the committee is very eager to get started, and they're jumping in to having committees, you know, within the next week or so. But just wanted to let you know our first meeting went very well, and I'm very excited, engaged, or excited and encouraged by the the passion of this committee to actually come for some great recommendations for this council.
Thank you, Ms. Vine. Mr. Rickaman?
I just, I wanted, Ms. Vine, I want to make sure that I connect you with Mr. Kevin Werner. He is on our TN board. And I had a conversation with him the other day. He used to be with Miller Valentine, and he's branched off and started his own. But he had some really great ideas about how to leverage private dollars and really stretch what we have to make a bigger impact. And I think some of his thoughts and stuff would really help your committee and and be able to harvest that talent you put together. So I'm just going to connect y'all. Just, it reminded me, I meant to send you a message about this morning. Y'all, because I think it it would be really helpful on some of the ideas he had from his private sector days.
Great, thank you, appreciate that.
I haven't, I haven't talked to Kevin lately, but I Daniel, his experience at Miller Valentine, and I think they have strengths around design, build work, around local housing tax credits and everything else, he would bring some value to discussions, too. I agree. Any other reports or referral? All right, thank you. Anyone signed up, Madam Kirk, for public input?
Yes, sir. We have about six individuals signed up to speak, and we are still receiving voicemails.
Okay, all right. Well, let's, let's go ahead and get the folks who signed up to speak, if in person. Thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
Really? Not three minutes, huh? This is Elaine Cooper, thirty-one oh five Delos Road, inside the city. Been a resident for more than forty years, and I am speaking on behalf of defunding the police. I was shocked to be with teenagers, white and black toddlers, who were tear-gassed and rubber bullets were used on nonviolent protesters. I've never seen this in the City of Columbia, even during the occupied days. Last time I saw this violence was in Chicago. Also, I gave Lawrence Nathaniel the information that we would go a long way in Columbia if we would insist that once the police officers were hired, that they live within the city limits, live within the community, also in Richland County. And I will and I have supplied that information. This is the Chicago I was raised. It made a huge difference. We can join the twenty-first century and go a long way. There's a big, also, there is continual racial profiling, because I have joined many, many friends of color over at the police station and made a huge difference in how they were treated and proceeded in their case when a white person would call to complain about them. In in one case, this black man was in, was doing ad litem work for his children, for his foster children that he was seeing, and was called because he was a black man in the community. This is the Columbia that we are living in now. This must be the Columbia that changes. Bless those young women for Empower, South Carolina, who spoke. And I would like to see a timeline that instead of just saying thank you and being polite, a timeline to address the issues immediately. Thanks, it was appalling. It's a dark day, a dark day in Columbia with what I continue to see day after day with this incredible police silence, when I saw what people showed me where a rubber bullet hit them. Holy crap, what is going on here in Columbia? We've got to defund the police and listen to these women in Empower, South Carolina, which, by the way, many other organizations have talked to the City of Columbia, Steve Benjamin, and other city councils before you and since you, and also to the people who've been in there for a very many years about these various issues. And also, I am here to tell you that I went door to door in two-nine-two-oh-three. It's a third-world conditions in two-nine-two-oh-three. Third-world poverty conditions that exist not far from our State House. And of course, two-nine-two-oh-three are the most impacted by COVID nineteen. Thank you. Too bad we had to wait so long as as citizens of Columbia to speak out.
Three minutes, thank you. Who have a next, Madam Kirk? Ms. Hammond?
My name is Ken Baker. I live at three-sixteen Emery Lane, Columbia. I want to start off by saying that after two full months, we're still waiting on full transparency and accountability from CPD regarding the unjustified and fatal shooting of seventeen-year-old Joshua Ruffin. And that is unacceptable from a city government and police chief that constantly claim to have a progressive, world-class police force that values the lives of citizens that it claims to serve. After the events of the past three weeks, I'm deeply disappointed in the mayor and city council, but I am even more profoundly disappointed in the Columbia Police Department. Over the past few weeks, I have seen videos, photographs, and written accounts of numerous instances of excessive force and police brutality in Columbia that are still not being adequately addressed by Chief Holbrook and our city government. This is unacceptable, and it needs to change immediately. After reading through the use of force policy that you have just rushed to adopt today, I still see huge inadequacies in addressing the numerous requests that you have received from the very citizens that you claim to serve. This policy is more of the same empty reform language that we've seen for decades. And just like previous so-called reform efforts, it's inadequate. It's ignoring and or minimizing citizen input. It's full of vague language that's designed to provide the police with an automatic accountability escape hatch, and it's guaranteed to result in absolutely no meaningful accountability and change within law enforcement. and change within law enforcement systems and structures. I'm profoundly disappointed with what I've heard today from the mayor, Chief Holbrook, and each and every member of the city council with regard to this use of force policy. I am one of many who has recently contacted city council members with four simple requests. In the one instance that I got a response from a council member, absolutely none of those asks were acknowledged or addressed outside of a claim that the city has already implemented the A-Can't-Wait guideline. So I'm going to repeat those four asks to you today. Number one, drop all charges against peaceful protesters arrested in the last three weeks and refund their bail or reinvest it in community building and not more arbitrary policing. Number two, immediately move to fire all the officers found to have engaged in illegal chokeholds, pointing weapons at civilians, unnecessarily arresting civilians, or otherwise threatening peaceful protest. Number three, ban the use of tear gas and other weapons of war on civilian populations. Number four, apologize to the people of Columbia and, and the Midlands for the ill-advised curfew and pledge to make amends by considering carefully the demands of protest movements calling for the preservation of black lives, included but not limited to the South Carolina I Can't Breathe Movement and PSL Group. Strictly adhere.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The, let's, I want to strictly adhere to the. I don't know how we can communicate to folks that maybe they have fifteen seconds left or something, so they can wrap up their, their, their comments. But obviously, we, we have to stay within it. So if you have that capacity, Madam Clerk, with this, with the system, let's do that. Some people adhere to it and some people won't. If they don't, then obviously, then, then we'll, we'll, we'll be forced to move on to the next speaker. But if there's an opportunity for them to, their comments, let's do that, okay?
Yes, sir, we can give folks a warning at thirty seconds and.
Yeah, it will be perfect.
All right, we have another caller on the line.
Okay, hi, my name's Tyler Johnson. I live at 316 Emery Lane, and thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I sent you all an email last, last week regarding what happened in Columbia a few weeks ago during the protest. And I was disappointed that only Mr. Duval responded. I wasn't at all impressed with Mr. Duval's response, but at least he did respond. So since I'm not sure that the rest of you read my email, please let me repeat some of my requests. One, please apologize to the people of Columbia for your ill-advised curfew and the ensuing abuses perpetrated by law enforcement. Two, please commit to holding all officers accountable who engaged in illegal chokeholds, pointed weapons at civilians, employed tear gas or other chemical agents, or otherwise terrorized protesters. Three, please ensure all charges against protesters are dropped and that their bails are refunded. Four, please fully, unambiguously, and unconditionally ban the use of tear gas and other weapons of war against civilians going forward. Finally, let me conclude with a series of questions for your consideration. Earlier in the meeting, Chief Holbrook celebrated Columbia's professional and ethical service to the community, and many of you sung his praises. But I ask you, what is ethical about firing tear gas at protesters in the middle of a pandemic? What's ethical about the photo we all saw in the state showing an officer here in Columbia kneeling on a man's neck? What's ethical about the way local law enforcement has dragged its feet in the Joshua Ruffin case?
Did we lose him?
We didn't do anything to cause him to drop off the line, so.
So maybe those were all the questions.
Sorry.
Okay, go ahead, sir, keep, keep going.
And one, one more. What, what is ethical about the fact that Columbia's, Columbia PD's budget continues to balloon year after year while our schools and social services go underfunded? Why should anyone in Columbia trust Columbia PD after what happened a few weeks ago? Does the sort of behavior we saw really inspire your confidence? After sitting through this meeting, I fear that you are all totally out of touch with the needs and desires of the people in Columbia. I'm very disappointed in the stance you have all taken on policing in our city. I hope you can change my mind in the future by taking meaningful action. The people of Columbia are watching. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Johnson. All right, Madam Clerk?
Next speaker.
Hi, my name is.
Please.
Jumped in there twice. My name's Andrew Hudson, and I live at 3205 Lincoln Street here in Columbia. And a number of folks who've spoken before me have made similar points. So I won't sort of read verbatim, but I'm another one of the folks who's sent more than three hundred and fifty letters to the city council and the mayor, as well as Sheriff Lot in the last week with these four demands. And so far, Councilman Duval's the only one who's written back to me, and it sounds like a couple of other folks. So I would respectfully say to the city council and to the mayor, you're, you're hearing us, but you're not yet listening to us. And when you told the women who spoke earlier on the call, who were also asking for you to defund the police and to use your power as budget overseers and as civilian oversight of the police to protect citizenry from a police department and a police state that's run amok on our civil liberties, you told us to be patient, not to be discouraged, but you also dismissed the idea out of hand. And frankly, that's disrespectful, in addition to just not acknowledging the base reality of the demands. So I want to say again that these four points that we've sent you to look at starts with forgiving the bail and dropping all charges against folks specifically connected to the curfew, because I think the city council, in some ways, is responsible for an original sin of a lot of the police violence we've seen in the last few weeks. By declaring a curfew, you literally took the side of the police department against the citizens who were out speaking against police violence. And when you did that, a number of the people who were arrested were arrested for nothing more than violating curfew, which is an order you had put in place only a few hours earlier. And by giving the police license to do that, they're even now pursuing people. They just put out another announcement on Saturday that they are looking for more people. The only crime that we can tell that some of these people have committed would have been violating the curfew the city council put in place. So you have helped to create this crisis situation in policing in Columbia, and you need to make amends for it by dropping the charges against the protesters, refunding their bail, or if you can't give it back, you need to find a way to reinvest it in the community. And then there are a number of specific reforms that we've suggested, and they're in all these different policy proposals from I Can't Breathe and Empower SC and Movement for Black Lives. And we'll just direct you to read the emails we've sent you, which have links to more information on that.
Mr. Hudson, before, before you go, will you tell me what emails you guys are sending emails to? I, I, I just took a quick break just to quickly scan my email, search your name. I assume it's spelled, it's spelled the way it sounds, Andrew Hudson, and also search Mr. Johnson. I don't have emails from either one of you. So I'm not sure where exactly those emails are going. And I'll be, I'll be happy to check again, but obviously, endeavor, never perfect, but endeavor to respond to, to citizen communications. Obviously, the last couple of weeks have been crazy. But I don't have, have an email from you at all. So I'm not sure where.
It was sent to the.
Would you take, take, would you take a look?
Email address.
Yeah.
It's the email address that's listed for you on the city website. Just trying to get back and see exactly how it's spelled. I don't know if that's a, a different box. And I do have copies of a lot of these letters, so I'd be happy to send them. If you, if you send us a way to submit, you know, written comments after this, we'd be happy to, to add them that way.
And maybe I need to track that down outside, but I, I haven't seen your emails or Mr. Johnson's emails. Were, were you done? Were you, were you done?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you for letting me interrupt you. And I, I do just a, a couple of things. And obviously, hopefully, as, as we, as we, I know we have other, other speakers, and obviously, there's consistency on, on the testimony that we've heard so far, or, or public comment. We can have different, differing views on, on a curfew. I can assure you that law enforcement is not looking for anyone who violated curfew. That, that's not happening. They are indeed looking for crimes during the imposition of the, of the curfew, and even when we didn't have one in place, and they will continue to do so. If in fact, people violated someone's property or, or, or their, their personal safety. Another two announcements this afternoon of a few people who physically assaulted, battered a gentleman in the Vista on, on the Saturday of the unrest in the Vista. So no, no one's being hunted down for a curfew violation. That's, that's factually untrue. And, and also, obviously, this discussion around not defunding the police, but, but, but maybe how we continue to invest and reinvest in under-resourced communities, something that we do every single day, the characterization of 29203, where I spent most of my adult life, where I, I married my wife and, and birthed our children, is, is a, is a completely off-point characterization that I take personally. And I'm glad Mr. Davis didn't chime in, I'm scared to not do so right now. Real challenges there as, as we, as we face as a microcosm of society. But the characterization by one of our calls earlier, wholly inconsistent. I hope and pray, as we talk about the substantive policy issues that have been raised, and maybe raised in other calls and voice messages to, to come, that we'll also have an additional commitment from citizens who demand so much of us, and, and as they should, to also learn more about our system of government and how the things that are important to all of us are funded. You, at, at your respective homes, pay tax mileage that goes to the, the, the school district for operating costs, goes to the school district for bond financing, goes to the county, goes, goes to the fire service. A very small portion of it comes to the, to the, to the city. You don't defund a, a police department or any city agencies, and that money goes to public schools. Indeed, the efforts that we focused on over the last ten years, at very least, have significantly increased the amount of funding going to, of public schools. So it, it, there's going to have to be some mutual responsibility to understand the budget and the, and the processes that, that fund the institutions that, that make our system of government work. Always indeed demanding the level of accountability that, that, that we, that we all require. But, but, but it's, it's, it's just so important. And we all, I mean, I've been around long enough, and there are two people can see the very same thing and, 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 and see it very differently. I can respect the diversity of, of, of opinion. But at least if we're going to have an intellectually, in a, a opinion, a disagreement on, on real issues, then we have to have a mutual responsibility to actually also know the facts. And I'm just encouraging all of us, let's, let's, let's all step up our game. There are some specific policy issues that, that, that each of you raised, and maybe some process issues that I think are very valid, and, and we need to take into account as, as, as a, as a, as your policymakers. But also, let's just make sure that as we kind of throw around these terms and accusations and pointing fingers, that we actually spend the time doing our homework first. I just wanted to lay that out there. Who we have up next, Madam Clerk?
All right, so we're going to queue up a call from Ms. Staley, Tamika Staley.
Hey, Ms. Staley.
Hello, how y'all doing?
How you doing?
This is Tamika Staley. I'm doing, could be better, but you know, making it, making it. I work, I do some freelance work in the city of Columbia. I'm living west Columbia now, but definitely born and raised in Columbia. And I would just like to make a demand, kind of what everyone else has been saying, that she be definitely be held accountable for a lot of the lethal force that they've been using against protesters, and for some of the lies that I've been hearing. I've heard Leon Lot lie several times on, on protesters, saying that they were being violent, and that's why they expelled tear gas and rubber bullets, which there are several clips and written statements that that was not true, and that was used simply for whatever reason. I don't know whether it was like an ego trip or whatever it was, but I just really found that to be unacceptable, that those things are being said as a justification to permit violence on most protesters. I would also like to demand that there be a plan set forth to address white supremacy and anti-black racism within the police department and in the city in general. Like you all as city council members have some political and economic power to address the root of the problem. While talking about practices and policy reform and changes are important, we're only addressing a symptom of the issue. Police brutality did not just come about, like nobody wakes up in the bed one day and decides to shoot a black person for no reason. A, a police officer doesn't racially profile on no reason. Those are learned behaviors. So I want to know, like, what is the plan to address that? Specifically, what are white people on this council going to do to unlearn and help their community members to unlearn white supremacy and anti-black racism and white complicity? Because that does aid into the genocide on black bodies. What's going to be done about that so that when we can get in the boardrooms, when you're getting to meetings, you don't allow these structures to impact your decisions? Because it starts there, you know, that's a learned behavior. I, I would like a plan to do that forth about what that, what that work is like to do that. You know, because I haven't heard anybody say that. You know, we're talking about, a lot about voting and a lot about changing and reforming things about the police. Those are changes that are being made in a system that was already built on violence, that was already built on racism, that was already built on genocide. I think that that should definitely be broken down entirely, and there's something that just has to be created separately, because you're going to still have the same issues over and over if you're only making complaints with any same system. And even you all, there's a lot of classes that, and policies. People are being evicted from their houses just simply because they can't afford rent during a pandemic. That just didn't come about, like that's something internally that people are making decisions from their thought processes, their ideologies, and I want a plan about that. So that is my, um, demand, and I really hope that I can see that soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Staley. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, just another point of privilege. We're not responsible for evictions, but quite frankly, we were actually the first council who asked for a moratorium on evictions. We don't have that authority, so we asked the, we asked the county to do it, and then the governor actually, or Supreme Court put it in place, but that is not within our purview. So I, I think certainly, I want to make sure that that's pointed out.
In addition, of course, to our, our efforts as one of the first cities in the country to give people the ability to keep their water service on during the pandemic without fear of, of, of losing that service. So, yeah, okay, all right, thank you. Who we have next?
Okay, we have Mr. Ben K. on the line.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
We can, Mr. K.
All right, hello, my name is Ben Kessler. I live at 1006 Princeton Street. I've now been a resident of Columbia for about a year and a half. I'm disappointed, honestly. I'm disappointed. Ms. Wilson, you said, you know, it's hard to teach young people about these hard topics. I'll say, I, I was five years old when I saw people jumping from the windows of the World Trade Center, I think, you know, and then plunged into an eighteen-year war. I think we can handle these issues, and we need to address them immediately, not wait on these things. We talked about revenues. We know that COVID is, is definitely taking a hit on our revenues, and we should start asking ourselves, why are we giving, what role do we want the police to have in our community? And I don't think it's a third of our budget. You know, you said, a lot of people here do not, I think it was quoted, actually, that you said, Ms. Wilson, that people don't want to defund the police. I, I think that was you may have said that. I may be wrong, and I apologize if I am. That's, that's wrong. We are here to defund the police. We want to fund social programs. You know, somebody said the general fund is, is not representative of, of what the police department's full costs are. I, I believe that's true. There's probably police settlements that are paid out, millions of dollars that we haven't seen. And I saw the social budget. The business, the Office of Business Opportunity gets less than one percent of funding, even less now that you guys moved to recruiting for that new budget. What, community development gets point oh-two, oh-oh-two percent of the budget, $491,000 in 2018. What community are we developing with that little resources going to that? I stand with everyone here demanding, you know, those, those four points that the city council and mayor needs to take up. Mayor, we heard you talk on Sunday about the eight minutes we need to take, eight minutes and forty. and 48 seconds every day we need to take. I think the city council needs to take those eight minutes and 48 seconds to decide how they want to fund their city. We are disappointed. The use of force policy you guys had discussed, I had to wait three hours to provide input right now, three hours and five minutes. There should be some criminal penalties attached to violating these policies. Your qualified immunity should be gone. We give so much training that you know the rules and policies, how you should be accountable if you violate them. And yes, that means we as taxpayers should not be paying out. Also, I'd like to say, Mayor, I know you walked down to the police department and were able to get, you know, that video release of the wrong officer's body cam. It'd be cool if you could walk down there, maybe call Josh Ruffin's mom, let her know what happened, maybe get the police department to release that video too. The sounds of it, it looks like you're trying to delay that, so there's not more agitation that you're providing to the community. I think that's disgusting. Also, we need to hold rebranding agencies and police department, sheriff departments accountable for their actions. We're supposed to be the capital city, let's lead by a capital example. Come on, guys, step it up. Like you said, Mayor, that was a very rude response to someone who's trying to get involved in the city process. Step it up, city council. Black out.
I'm gonna assume that you're not on mute and that three minutes is up, Mr., I think it was Kessler, he said K, Mr. Kessler. Appreciate your input, appreciate your passion. I will tell you that factually, you're on on a number of fronts, but you know, it's all right. We're big boys and girls, and you gotta take the licks. I would encourage you, however, as things continue to develop on the Ruffin case and others, to continue to pay attention and continue to have your voice heard. I understand the pain that a number of folks are under as we watch the incredible challenges that America is facing, indeed the world's facing right now. But I would encourage you to recognize the fact that you are not only speaking to people of color, you are speaking to black men, black men. I think I may be the youngest one on this call, 50 years, probably at least, or longer than that. I would encourage you to maybe at very least assume that we may have a set of life experiences that may indeed inform our perspectives in a way that maybe you can't imagine. I know that it's the importance of having allies, but dig a little deeper, brother, and lean towards the belly angels of your nature. As, again, you speak, remember that words matter. Words cannot heal, serve as a bomb in Gilead, or seek to divide people. We gotta figure out how to turn this pain and this passion into real progress. Keep advocating, it's one of the most fantastic rights guaranteed in this great republic in which we live. But again, I would encourage you that as you continue to speak and advocate, remember that words indeed have power. And it's very important to not just speak with your passions, but actually speak with your heart and your head and be informed as you advocate. All right, let's keep it going, Madam Clerk.
My name is Lisa Lang.
Ms. Lang, please.
My name is Lisa Lancaster. I live in Sally, South Carolina. Just know I don't even need a reply to this, and this is just my opinion for what it's worth. First, please know that these people that you heard today do not stand for the majority of us. So please keep arresting all protesters who were not or are not peaceful during any protest. We also do not need this mandatory face mask BS. This COVID has blown way out of proportion. What about white lives? They matter too. Also, please do not defund the police department, we need them. There are some snowflakes that want it, but the majority of us do not. This whole Black Lives Matter has gone too far. Blacks were slaves, Jews were killed, Indians were hunted down and killed. It wasn't pretty, but it happened. You want to stop racism, stop talking about it. I don't care if I'm speaking to blacks or whites, I'm speaking to men and women, that's it. As far as firing tear gas, rubber bullets, keep it up. Keep law and order for the ones that need it. You know, the ones that don't want it are the ones that are not bodied by the law. I'm so sick of everyone being offended by so much. I'm offended of men wearing pants hanging out their butts. I'm offended that our history is trying to be erased. We're given life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, not happiness, just the ability to pursue it. So stop all this nonsense, keep up the good work. I want to thank you for keeping us all safe. That's all I got to say.
This is a hell of a beating, Lord have mercy. I remember, and I'm gonna keep this brief, I remember after my first few council meetings, I got a call from Bob Koble, who strongly encouraged me not to respond to every speaker that had something to say that might have been, actually, it was, that's something to say that I vehemently disagreed with, and I've taken that into account. And I've decided, and I've told some of you before, that I only speak up if indeed I do believe that some comments might kind of cross the line if they ever slip toward antisemitism or racism, xenophobia, or sexism, or some of the things that I think violate the spirit of who we are as a city. Those points are very clear that the resident of Sally, South Carolina, I made just a moment ago. I also come from the school where I believe that silence often means dissent as well. I disagree with a number of the points raised. But again, thankful that we live in this country where you can raise those points and to have your say. And we take everything into account as members of this council, whether you live inside the borders of the city or not. You cannot be a stranger anywhere within the borders of this country. So thank you, Ms. Lancaster. Madam Clerk, next. I know it takes a moment for speakers to queue in, Ms. Hammond.
All right, can you all hear me?
After the next speaker, yeah, we can. After the next speaker, Ms. Hammond, let us know any more speakers. Please, yes, you're on, sir, go ahead.
All right, awesome. It's what an act to follow. I mean, honestly, it's nice to have some comic relief after all those heavy callers. I know what I'm going to say is often spoke by the people who spoke before, a lot of it is just a series of questions. One, why has the footage of the Josh Ruffin shooting not come out? What was that?
Would you state your name for the record, please?
Oh, of course. My name's Hayden Blakeney. I live at Cornell Arms on Pendleton Street, right next to the State House.
Go ahead, please.
So as I was saying, okay, so I was just curious about why the Josh Ruffin footage has not come out yet. It's really disturbing to me to see that Columbia Police Department is holding that so close to the vest, no pun intended, after weeks of protests demanding for the release of this footage. If according to the narrative that Columbia Police were completely justified in their shooting, then there should be no issue releasing the footage at all. We should be able to see the gun that he allegedly had, we should be able to hear the officers who are involved, to hear their testimony. Second of all, there was also a story that came out from Columbia Police Department that they had supposedly found a water bottle filled with caustic fluid at a protest. And this, of course, got passed on to the local broadcast media, and there was some allegations that it was being sent to the FBI to test. I think we need to see those test results to determine if the field test was actually reliable, and if that was something that protesters did, because I think we all know that the protesters didn't do that, and it seems to be something that's kicked up just to give protesters a bad name. And finally, I think most importantly, I really would like to know what this new resolution does to radically change the state of policing in the city of Columbia. There's been a pretty big gap growing between the law enforcement and the public in that trust that's formed in the past week, and it seems like this new legislation hasn't really done anything in that. It doesn't seem to be a huge step in any good direction, and worst of all, represents the bare minimum. I think we should do a lot better than that. And just as a final comment before I go, I think it's also very disturbing to see council members like Daniel Rickman looking at their phone constantly and smiling sarcastically at constituents while they're talking. I yield my time.
Thank you. Hayden, I forget your last name, I apologize. Thank you for your input. I'm not sure how long you've been on, maybe you've been on for the entire duration like we have, but yeah, you might be surprised that your council people are human too. We have families and jobs and other things going on, so occasionally you might actually have to check on phone messages, might actually get text messages. I have several from constituents as the meeting goes on, and you have to reply to them. So I would again ask you to, I'd always assume the worst, but sometimes assume the best. And I'm not gonna answer all the questions that you ask, some of them, I'm sure that there were questions that, inasmuch, but I will speak very specifically, very precisely as to the Joshua Ruffin case. One of the issues that, policies that the chief spoke about earlier, which is a best practice, including amongst those who are the most progressive and those who are most conservative in our society and everyone in between, is that if in fact you have the worst-case scenario, where you actually lose a life as an officer doing his job, those cases are not investigated by the agency involved. Independent investigation are at the core of getting to the bottom of exactly what happened. And as a result, in this community, our state law enforcement division, those cases, and then over to our solicitor, our district attorney, the police department is not involved in that case. If it's in fact ended, then you should not expect, and you should not want, the police department involved in the investigation and disposition of the case. Solicitor Gibson, he will present the facts to the people at a time in which his investigations concluded, size, that it's appropriate. It would not be appropriate for the police department to do so. Another, a number of other suggestions and allegations that may be truthful or not, and may just be rumor, but we'll leave that to the solicitor to share with the public at the appropriate. I know, I understand that several of the answers that we may give you, I may give you, may not meet your satisfaction, but they're just the facts. Thank you.
Just for the record, I'm gonna check text messages when my daughter's texting me to let me know what, where she is and what she's doing.
And I know your philosophy, like everyone else on this call, our families actually surprisingly come first. All right, Madam Clerk, how many more callers do we have?
We have one caller who just joined the line there.
All right, we'll take the last call. And it's my understanding we have a number of voicemails primarily related to the respective map coordinates. I've asked the clerk to condense those into an email and to share with all members of council to begin to listen to and consider as we go through the due diligence process of looking at that. So we will not listen to all of those tonight, but it'll be in your inbox post haste. Let's take this last call, Madam Clerk.
This is Dr. Jan Eber.
Yes, yeah, we can hear you. Yes, ma'am. Would you restate your name?
Hello. Yes, hello, my name is Jan Eber. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, please.
Great. My name is Jan Eber. I am a resident of Richland County, City of Columbia. I'm a professor of epidemiology at the University of South Carolina, and I just was calling to support and fully endorse the idea of wearing masks in public. It's completely endorsed by the scientific literature. There have been many studies that have come out in just the past month that support this. In fact, they state that if up to 80% of the public wore masks in public, then basically the coronavirus second epidemic could be halted. So the simulation studies strongly support this, public health professionals strongly support it. And unfortunately, you know, the mask-wearing idea has become sort of a political line ideology, and really, if we look at it from a health perspective, the data strongly support it. It doesn't matter if political affiliation, we really need to be thinking about the health of not just our elderly friends and neighbors and family, but also those with small children that have chronic conditions such as asthma, those that have general heart diseases that could be impacted by coronavirus. It's not just something that can only impact those in the elderly population, and even if it does, that's a great population of people we want to protect or help. So I just want to make that known and welcome any interest by the city council to send these seven scientific articles forward for your review.
That would be appreciated. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Mayor, there are no other callers on the line?
All right, thank you. And again, regardless of the positions and opinions that you held or how kindly or not as kind, but clearly articulated them to us, we want to thank you for participating in the process. And I want to tell you, even if we may not agree with everything stated or the way it was stated, we're listening. I think it's important to note that. Mr. Duval, do you have a motion?
Well, Mr. Duval can make the motion. I did want to add legal advice on naming, naming of public facilities.
All right, thank you. With that amendment, Howard, you have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we go into executive session for receipt of legal advice related to matters covered by attorney-client privilege pursuant to 30-4-78 to legal advice pertaining to COVID-19, discussions and negotiations, instance, proposed contractual arrangements pursuant to 30-4-78 to Lake Catherine settlement, and discussion of matters related to proposed location or expansion of services to encourage location or expansion of industries or other businesses pursuant to 30-4-78 to Mr. Seaford.
A second. Who the previous question, clerk, roll.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Elizabeth Mann?
Hi.
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Hi.
Mr. Devine?
Hi.
Mr. Davis?
Hi.
Mayor Benjamin?
Hi.